Good evening. I'd like to call this January 14th meeting of the Placerville City Council to order, and if everyone will please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody will please continue to stand for a moment. I'd like to take this time just to call for a brief moment of silence. As many of you know, a little boy by the name of Roman Lopez was found deceased just a couple of days ago. There's no worse tragedy, I think, than a young life ending so early. And so, we're a small community, and I think we all feel the pain for his family and for his friends, and so I'd just like to take a quick moment of silence in his honor. We have a full house tonight. This is -- we like this. We don't usually get this many. So, we can have a roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Okay, we have quorum, and at this time, the city clerk will administer the oath of mayor to myself.[135.72][135.72](Laughter).
I, Michael Saragosa.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
Against all enemies
Against all enemies
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
That I will well and faithfully
That I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
Upon which I'm about to enter
Upon which I'm about to enter
Congratulations.
Thank you.[207.87][207.87](Applause).
I get to sign my own shirt.[225.48][225.48](Laughter). Thanks. Okay, we have a full agenda tonight, so we're gonna move through these quickly. So, item three, announcements, presentations to the public. Our first one, 3.1, announcement of cannabis licenses, and this will be Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will keep this brief. I have a pretty detailed report that you're welcome to refer to. We did start this process on April 29th of last year. We opened application dates for that, and we received 13 applications. We have gone through several phases of review over the last about nine months, and we have reached the conclusion of that where I have awarded those licenses to those that I felt were the best fit and the most appropriate based on all of the factors that came into play during the application process. So, I'll just briefly announce those three that were awarded licenses are Placerville California LLC or Sacred Roots. Number two is Conscious Consulting and Yoga Incorporated or Chuck's Cannabis Collective, and number three is JSCR Management LLC or Reserve House. I want to note a couple of things. One of the things we did was we chose, or I chose, in conjunction with talking with the interview, or the cannabis committee that interviewed them, I chose to also select three alternates. If for some reason one of these three is unable to obtain a license or unable to get open or perform, we would have the opportunity to look at one of the next three on that list. Those three are Canotopia and Partners, CN Holdings, and Three Habitat Consulting Placerville LLC. So, just for your information. I also need to note that there is an appeal period. Initially, I know some of the applicants are here tonight. Initially, we had noted that that appeal period would be 10 days from my award, which I sent out letters of award on Friday. However, due to some information and some requests we've had, we've determined that there's some information we need to release which is specific to this and allow those appeals to go. So, we will be releasing information such as the applications of all the candidates which have not been released yet to the public. Hopefully, within the next week, we have to do some work before we can release those, and from that date when those are released, we will send out the appeal application form to any of the applicants that are interested, and they will have 10 days from that date to appeal. So, we're still up to about two weeks before that appeal period would actually end, and we will set that date once we get that information made available. So, with that, Mayor and Council, I'll answer any questions you have, but that's -- no further action is required on this item from you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris.
I just have a real quick question.
Yep.
So, when are these folks then allowed to start business? When do they?
They can start the licensing process now, those three that were awarded. They need to recognize that there is this appeal process, which potentially, the appeal process comes back to the city council, appealing my decision. So, there is that slight risk that something could change, but they are welcome to start the state licensing process immediately, so.
Any other questions?
The three alternates, as they appear on that form, are they in particular order?
They are in the order that we are recommending them, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, question for --
Yes.
Mr. Morris, this afternoon we received an email from one of the applicants stating that they're going to be filing an appeal. Assuming that they follow through with that, where will that fit into the timetable of events that you just described?
We would accept an appeal at any time, obviously, but we also have an appeal form that we're trying to finalize that we didn't anticipate we should have earlier, but we will be sending to them, and they will be allowed to be considered along with any appeals that we get. Once we receive those, that -- once the 10-day period is closed and we've received all those, we will schedule that hearing before the city council for you to hear it, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I will open it up to the public for any comments. If you could state your name for the record.
Brian Chase. I have a prepared statement. Good evening, members of the city council, members of the public. My name's Brian Chase, and I am a business owner in the Placerville Downtown Association or Central Business District and the president of the PDA. The PDA is a private nonprofit 501(c)(6) corporation under the California Corporations Code. As such, the PDA has the right --
Brian, are you making a comment on the cannabis or on something different?
Just on public comment.
Oh, so we're gonna -- that'll be a little bit later in the agenda.
So, this is actually just a public comment from the PDA, and it has nothing to do with the agenda item.
Okay, so that'll be a little bit later in the agenda. Sorry for any confusion.
Just for the public comment?
Correct. This is a public comment on cannabis.
Okay, yeah, no worries. I'll continue later.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Anybody wishing to comment on the cannabis or questions? Seeing none, I will bring it back. Anything else from council? Okay, let's move on to item 3.2, comments by city council members, and I'll start with Councilmember Taylor.
I have no comments at this time.
Just this is the time we usually tell what we did and celebrated the holidays, and I think Placerville just did a bang-up job, and I'm very proud of us, and I think we've gotten a lot of wonderful comments. I've only attended one meeting since, and it was the Fire Safe Council meeting, and was honored to serve at the first responders fundraiser and the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser, so that's what I did during the holidays.
Thank you, Patty.
All right, let's see. Just recently, I was appointed to the Board of Directors of the Sacramento Valley Division of League of California Cities, and I'll have more to talk about that as it develops. One of the things I talked about with regard to Christmas last year, we recognized a lot of people that helped with the lights. One of the groups that, many groups, that I did not recognize is the faith-based community for our Christmas events downtown that stepped up in such a huge way to support and actually, for free, and they provided chocolate cookies, they worked, they helped with the sound system downtown to project it out. They provided three stages full of people and full production with all the sound equipment and lights to just make the festive, our Festival of Lights, just that much more festive, if that makes sense. So, I just, I wanted to shout out to our faith-based communities. It was led by Al Soto, and he did an amazing job. There was a, I think there was seven or eight different churches that provided close to 100 volunteers on that night to make that night extra special for downtown, so I wanted to make sure and point that out and give them a shout out.
Much appreciated.
Yes, pretty amazing. Thank you.
Councilmember Acuna.
I'll make this brief as I'm fighting the flu, and I'm not quite sure how long my voice is gonna last this evening, as he moves over, but I got all my prescription drugs from Robbins.
We're all leaving.[717.51][717.51](Laughter).
First of all, I would just like to thank all those members of staff in the community that have reached out and expressed their condolences, recent loss of my 89-year-old father-in-law on Christmas Day, to the crew at Station 25, to those folks that chose to work on Christmas Day at Marshall Lear, that recognizes the severity of the event, and to all of the brilliant surgeons, again, that chose to work on Christmas Day at UC Davis. They did an outstanding job in buying my family a few additional days before we lost you on New Year's Eve. So, all of your cards and flowers from council and staff is greatly appreciated, and all the well wishes on social media. I certainly appreciate all of your support. On a more positive note, I was, Cleve and I were honored to have been invited and very proud to represent the city at the Transfer of Command Ceremony that occurred on January 2nd at the Red Hawk Administration Building in the casino. If you haven't had an opportunity to see that building, it is spectacular. They also have a police station that our chief is now envious of, but it was a real honor to watch a return to tradition. Lloyd Ogan, the outgoing fire chief, who was interim chief last year, introducing Chief Cordero, who's here, I believe, this evening. He's sitting right up in front, which is very nice to see. And a special part of it about being Placerville is they chose to bring back the, I guess it's pewter, the trumpet, the speaking trumpet, that is from Confidence Hall Station dated So, they went through the formal exchange. It was a beautiful ceremony also by the tribe to recognizing outgoing and incoming commands, and it was a real honor to be a part of that, and we wish County Fire a tremendous success in this new chapter with a new chief. And I would also thank those members of our department heads that took time out of their busy day to attend that. I think it was very important to show our support as a city for the men and women that keep us safe 24 hours a day in Eldorado County Fire District. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. And just real quickly for me, I attended as well the Boys and Girls Club dinner, and I just want to thank the community really. Over 600 people there raising a --
650.
650.[876.69][876.69](Laughter). I think Patty served almost all of those folks as well as we came through the line. Just, it's just an incredible show of support from the community for the Boys and Girls Club. We'll have another, I think this weekend, for more as well, their event. They're sort of stacked up in January, but really just want to thank the community. It's just great to see, you know, all the support for the Boys and Girls Club, a ton of money raised, and just a lot of good friendship and fellowship at that event. So, let's go ahead then and move on. So, item four, closed session report. Mr. Driscoll, is there anything to report on?
There is not, Mr. Mayor. The council did not take reportable action tonight in closed session.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Item five, adoption of agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Moving on to ceremonial matters, item 6.1, oath of office for our new Placerville Police Reserve Police Officer, Eric Tudamont. And this will be with Regina as well as the chief. The chief, you want to introduce our new officer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and pleased to do that. This is one of my favorite duties to do is to introduce our new staff members. Officer Eric Tudamont will serve as a reserve police officer for the Placerville Police Department. He was born and raised in Beminda, Cameroon, which is located in central Africa. He moved to Elk Grove in 2009 with his mother, Hilda Jenenbaum. Eric has four siblings, Francis, Cabella, Erica, and Samuel. Eric speaks three languages, English, French, and Creole. He graduated from Monterey Trail High School in Elk Grove, and he has completed some undergraduate work, coursework at Consumis River College and American River College, and will work towards the completion of his bachelor's degree. Eric graduated from the Sacramento Regional Public Safety Training Center in November of 2018. From 2014 to 2018, Eric worked as a certified nursing assistant, and that's when he got the calling to become a public safety professional. He has been employed full-time as a police officer for the Shingle Springs Band of Miwok Indians Police Department for a little over a year. In his spare time, Eric enjoys reading, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, and enjoys the outdoors, and we are very happy to welcome Eric to the Placerville PD family and the city of Placerville.[1031.63][1031.63](Applause).
Do solemnly affirm That I will support and defend The Constitution of the United States And the Constitution of the State of California Against all enemies Foreign and domestic That I will bear true faith and allegiance To the Constitution of the United States And the Constitution of the State of California That I take this obligation freely Without any mental reservation Or purpose of evasion And that I will well and faithfully Discharge the duties Upon which I'm about to enter
And Eric, if you want to say any words, the podium is yours if you'd like to. You don't have to.[1128.08][1128.08](Laughter). But you're welcome to.
Well, I was kind of told this part was optional, but --
It was. It's completely optional.[1147.43][1147.43](Laughter). Mandatory optional for this.
Well, ever since I applied for this department, I've been treated with respect, and everyone's been so welcoming to me, and I have nothing but the utmost respect for everyone that I've met so far. It's been a long ride, and I'm happy to be here, and I'm looking forward to learning the most I can, and so I can be a better officer to this city. And my family's here, and they're here to support me. My mom and I, we have such a very great relationship just because of where we grew up at and how far it's taken us to come to the United States, become citizens and stuff, and so I'm hoping that this is gonna be home for me and my family. So, again, thank you guys for coming out here and accepting me, and I hope to do the best I can to serve you.[1203.33][1203.33](Applause).
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Hi, Derek. He said that he'd introduce his family.
Eric, do you want to introduce your family here?
Sure. Have mom come up.
I see mom.[1222.23][1222.23](Laughter).
This is my mom.
Welcome, mom.
She helped raise all of us, single mom, five kids, and she made an honest man out of me, so.[1232.58][1232.58](Laughter).
Thank you.[1234.58][1234.58](Applause). I think Eric's a natural speaker. He did great up there. Okay, moving along, item 6.2, proclamation for former interim Eldorado County Fire Chief, Chief Lloyd Ogan. And I'm gonna have Mark, Councilmember Acuna, do this proclamation. Mark worked hand-in-hand with the chief during some really trying times, and I thought it was appropriate for Mark to read this proclamation for the chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity, and I hope I didn't give away too much of my surprise a little earlier with my other comments. It's my honor to read this proclamation. The city council, the city of Placerville honoring the service of interim Eldorado County Fire Chief Lloyd Ogan. Lloyd, would you like to come up to the podium, please? Whereas the city of Placerville honors the service of interim Eldorado County Fire Chief Lloyd Ogan, in October, in 1982, Chief Ogan was an ROP student in Rancho Cordova, and whereas in 1983, Chief Ogan was hired as a full-time firefighter engineer with the Natomas Fire Protection District. And whereas in the years between 1984 and 2015, Chief Ogan rose up through the ranks of Sacramento City Fire Department, retiring as the deputy chief of operations. And whereas in 2018, Chief Ogan became, came out of retirement to lead the Eldorado County Fire District until a new chief could be named. And whereas Chief Ogan's dedicated assistance to the city and local volunteers helped establish the wildfire vegetation ordinance and the creation of the Placerville Fire Safe Council, both helping to protect and improve Placerville for years to come. And whereas Chief Ogan's endless support during the 2019 PG&E PSPS events, including supplying weather and historical fire, wildfire data to PG&E leadership during every PSPS event in October and November 2019 was invaluable. His efforts built a body of evidence disproving PG&E's concerns and the need to shut off power in central Eldorado County. It was Chief Ogan's insistence to meet immediately on-site with PG&E leadership in November that stopped a fifth needless PSPS event from occurring. Now, therefore be it resolved by the virtue of the authority invested as the mayor of the city of Placerville, we offer our gratitude to Chief Ogan for his tireless dedication and exemplary leadership to both Eldorado County Fire District and the city of Placerville over the past year. And this is dated January 14th, 2020, signed by our new Mayor Saragosa and also every member of this city council. Let me just add that Lloyd and Cleve and myself spent part of every day that there was an announced PG&E shut-off, prior, during, to, and beyond, after countless times contacting PG&E, sending information through, that Chief Ogan was gracious enough to have his crews out in the districts, providing real-time fire weather data that disproved any of the evidence that PG&E had that the power needed to be turned off four of the five times. That evidence is something that is going to be presented to PG&E leadership now that the holiday season is over. His tireless willingness to stand with us as we felt like we were beating our heads on the wall talking with PG&E, leadership is, was just a godsend, and in the end, I'm confident that it was our persistence and his knowledge and his detailed information sharing that made them realize that much of Eldorado, Amadores, and other counties to the south have no semblance or risk to some of the counties that PG&E was concerned about to our north. And it is through Lloyd's efforts last year that I'm confident that we will get PG&E's attention this next wildfire season. So, Lloyd, thank you very much not only for that, but also for everything that you provided for our Fire Safe Council as they came up as a brand-new organization, full of new enthusiastic citizens that have never been, some never have been involved in things before. We needed to know how to do it correctly, and you provided that leadership. Same thing with our vegetation ordinance and your willingness to commit your time and staff to addressing the concerns, because this community was filled with fear at this time last year, because you all have to remember, we watched Paradise burn to the ground on the 6th of November. I felt that as a new mayor, my, it was, that was the task the citizens wanted dealt with, and it was your help that made us make progress all year long. So, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd be, I'm honored to present this.[1544.63][1544.63](Applause).
Thank you very much. You know, I've said this before, but I'll, but I'll say it again tonight because I think the city staff needs to hear it. And again, thank you to all of you who came to our change of command. We noticed it, and it was special that you were there, but what I have to say tonight is, you know, in my past experience in Sacramento, city staff meetings and city council meetings weren't always fun. And what I have to say about working here in Placerville is this is a completely different environment, and you guys, I mean, the credit to the city manager, to you guys in the city council, you guys have something really special here in Placerville. You've got a great city staff. It was a pleasure. In fact, I look forward to going to city staff meetings each week because there was real stuff getting done. There was, there was respect for everybody in the room. Everybody's opinion mattered and counted, and that was, that's something special that you guys need to celebrate, I think, more. Maybe people don't say it enough, but you guys need to celebrate that. You've got something really special in this city, and you guys got a staff that is, in my opinion, is second to nobody. And it, so a fire chief doesn't do all this stuff alone. Our staff obviously did all the nice things you said, Mark, were, I appreciate them, but it was our staff that really did the heavy lifting. And from the city's perspective, it was, it was you, it was the city manager, it was all the staff that helped us through those PSPS crises, and I wish you all the luck going forward, and if I can help you anymore next year, I'll be happy to do that. So, thank you very much.[1697.13][1697.13](Applause).
Thank you, chief. Councilmembers, anyone else like to make any comments?
I think Mark pretty much said it all. Thank you.
Chief Cordero, any, any comments? No.[1718.43][1718.43](Laughter). All been said already.[1721.13][1721.13](Laughter). Well, again, just from my perspective, Chief Ogan, I had a chance, at least when I was serving as vice mayor, was on a lot of those communications and, and calls and things like that, and your help, I mean, Mark said it completely right. We would have had that fifth PSPS without your assistance, and I mean, the four we had before that really were devastating to our local economy, to our businesses here, and so the fact that we could at least get one that didn't happen was huge, I think, and it'll, and it serves as a baseline for us going into this year. So, again, we appreciate all your efforts, and we wish you a good retirement. If you ever want to come back and do something else with us, let us know as well, though. Thank you, chief. Okay, move on to item 6.3, proclamation honoring the career of Mr. James Whipple. And I have the honor of reading this one. There's a lot of whereas's, so I may, I may skip through a couple of the whereas's here. Yes, if you'll please join us at the podium, please. Thank you, James. So, proclamation of the city -- the University of Washington, his undergraduate degrees are in mathematics and economics. And whereas James met his wife, Deborah, while they were in college and have been married since 1979. Whereas James and Deborah now have two grown sons, two grown daughters, and one granddaughter. And whereas James started his career in healthcare as the controller at Ride Out Hospital in Marysville, where he worked for three years. And whereas James was contacted by a headhunter to interview for Marshall Hospital as the chief financial officer, and was hired on the spot in November 1981 by the then-CEO Frank Nachman. James started work at Marshall in January 1982, and James and Frank worked together for 22 years, and when Frank retired, James was promoted to CEO of Marshall Hospital Center in October 2002. And whereas during James' tenure, Marshall Medical Center, Marshall Hospital grew from 56 beds to 125 beds, and opened 20 clinics around the western slope of Eldorado County. And whereas James joined Marshall Medical Center and employed roughly 360 employees, and today, Marshall Medical Center employs nearly 1,700 people in its many facilities around the western slope. And whereas under James' leadership, Marshall's Medical Center was recognized with a CMS five-star for overall hospital quality in 2018, health grades top 10% hospital in the nation for outstanding patient experience in 2018, and the American Heart Association stroke gold plus in 2015 and 17. And whereas James' clear-eyed vision and steady hand have ensured the financial stability of one of California's last not-for-profit independent hospitals, and leaves a legacy of high-quality compassionate care for Eldorado County residents and visitors for the next generation to continue in. Whereas under James' leadership, Marshall Medical Center has developed a culture of compassion and caring that extends from its patients to its staff and is the envy of other healthcare providers. And whereas during his tenure at Marshall, James has always emphasized the health needs of residents of Placerville and the western slope of Eldorado County. Now, therefore, I, Michael Saragosa, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Placerville, State of California, urge all citizens to join me in congratulating James for his outstanding 38-year career with Marshall Medical Center, in which he has many continued years of happiness and good health, dated January 14, 2020.
I want to thank you for this. I also want to recognize what was mentioned earlier. Besides the businesses in this community, when PG shuts down, it really affects healthcare, and there were some bad outcomes due to the, theirs, so this is a bigger issue than, that affects everybody in, in the community. So I'm really glad our former mayor was a leader in that, but the city council and everybody, because it's important for the future that we continue to, to deal with this. Again, I want to thank you. I really think Placerville is a really special place, and it's a lot because of you and your predecessors that I've had the pleasure of working with over the years. It's, we're independent because the community really supports us. I have amazing people I work with that do amazing job, but we can't do it our own, and so I want to thank the city for all the help over the 38-plus years that I've worked with up here, and also want to really appreciate the fact that we've grown from about 300 to over 1,700, another 200 or 300 doctors who almost all work in Placerville, probably 80%, so we're a huge employer within the city, which is nice to have for a small city. So again, I really want to thank you for your help and your, all your predecessors over the years to keep Placerville and Eldorado County special, so thank you very much.
Thank you, James. And I know, I think, I think a couple of my colleagues might want to say a few words as well.
Well, my history goes probably further back than you realize, James. Jerry Bennett was on a board of directors, and he was one of the ones that hired James as the CEO. And he, during that time, he would, during the deliberation and the hiring process, he, him and I talked quite a bit about it, and he talked about the challenges of a CFO going to CEO, CEO position. And he was, and, and he realized the significance and the importance of this position, especially following in Frank Nochman's shoes. That was some big shoes to follow, and I think, I think you could attest to that, James. From the beginning, I think you have been a staunch defender of keeping our hospital rule, keeping it relevant, and keeping it independent. And, and you have often been on the leading edge of technology, and, and as evident, one of the first hospitals in the area to have a DaVinci surgical robot. I mean, that, to me, when that happens here in Placerville, that, that is an amazing thing, and you brought that to our community, and without your leadership, I, that, you know, that might not have happened. I know that you have fought, fought very hard to keep our healthcare system strong and, and the medical care local, and I don't know that our community recognizes the significance of that. Keeping the big corporations that make decisions away from here, like, maybe like Kaiser, UC Davis, Dignity, they wouldn't have the same care and compassion for this community that, that we have now with the leadership and how this hospital serves our community. James is, has fought hard to remain local and to remain relevant, and I can't tell you, Wendy, my wife, has served on the hospital board, and how much she appreciates that significance. Our, our families appreciate that as well, as we have been, used our system here quite a bit lately. I have no doubt that Jerry, you know, Jerry has now passed, he sat on the city council, he was on the board, board of directors for Marshall Hospital for, for quite a while there, and I have no doubt that he would feel very proud of what Marshall Hospital's become to this date. In fact, prior to his lamenting, he actually was, talked about that, talked about, lamented about the, the value that Marshall Hospital brings us to this community. And that wouldn't have happened without you, James. With that, I would like to personally thank you for your, for your years of service and, and how much you brought to this community, you kept it in this community, and you supported this community, so thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other comments? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. James, congratulations on a tremendous career, and thank you very much for making all of it so special here in Placerville and leaving behind the growing legacy that Marshall has turned into. As I'm, as I was listening to the proclamation and to Councilmember Thomas's comments, and my most recent opportunities to be in the Marshall system, I can't remember when I came here as a long-haired hippie young kid and walked the halls and thought, wow, look at who are all these doctors, and look at these board members and all these folks. Now, I'm very proud to say that I know or had worked with the majority of those people, have enjoyed the care that they have brought to this community, people like yourself, and in all the boards and the foundations, continued commitment to making Marshall the excellent organization that it is. I can attest to, as I mentioned on Christmas Day, the compassion and the quality and the concern that was shown for a family member. If that wasn't enough, we decided to try and ride Marshall again last week with A1 influenza, which is not covered by this year's flu shot, and I am very pleased, and my wife is still astounded that I got her through her primary, primary care physician all the way through all the tests and back home within two hours. Had the confirmation of what she had, had a chest x-ray, and all the prescriptions at Robinson's Pharmacy were being filled. And she said, where in the world could we go that in two hours, and she was, anyone that's had this flu knows that it is miserable, and she was on day three. She, where could we live where we would have the blessing to, within two hours, to know all the doctors, know where to go, go to the lab, everyone smiled, they got me right in, and now I'm back home in two hours? That's a heck of a legacy. And so thank you again personally and on behalf of the council for everyone that you've brought into the organization over your years. And it was, it struck me as funny, as I was up there Wednesday, don't tell my wife I was laughing, but of course, as hospitals must always be, it's being remodeled again. So we did our best to try and not contaminate everybody she was coughing on, but I thought, oh my gosh, this place never stops growing. But we did find imaging, and it was quick. So I thought, how appropriate that you're, we were celebrating your retirement, and I, I have personally been a part of a couple of ribbon cuttings up there, the ER, for example, when that was brand-new. And so does the two, to be up there just last week and see that you're confidently under construction, and I'm looking forward to seeing what you build next, so enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Again, James, I didn't get a chance really to, to work with you all, not much at all, but I'm a proud Marshall member myself, and as my colleagues have said, you know, I can make a call tomorrow and I'll be in tomorrow to see my provider, and it's, it's a wonderful feeling to be able to have that and to have that, that local gem here in Placerville. I do think sometimes we take it for granted that we have Marshall here, and it's really on behalf of your efforts over all these years that, that we're able to have that and to have such quality service here. So again, on behalf of myself and my councilmember colleagues, congratulations.
My, I just, no, real quick, I wanted, I'm recalling something.
I recall.
Michael, your wife Brenda, used to work in Governor Schwarzenegger's office, and remember the big occasion when we came up to Marshall, we were all at Marshall and Governor came up, and in fact, Brenda's here in the off, in the audience now, and she organized all that, so I think, you know, it's kind of funny how things kind of, you know, come around, yeah. So, yeah, but my congratulations too, and happy retirement.
Okay. We will now move on to item 6.4, which is employee service recognition, and City Manager Morris has this.
I'm just wondering, do we want to take a brief break, Mayor? I think some people are going to leave.
Yeah, we can do that. Will we take a 10-minute break?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. We're going to move on to item 7, which is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Oh, that's right, I forgot. Thank you, Patty. I thought we were moving on to, see, I'm trying to move ahead, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to move this along here. So item 6.4, employee service recognition, and Mr. Morris has this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Firstly, I would like to apologize, as you know, we usually do this in December, and we did do this in December. However, we made an error in our, in my department in recognizing everyone that we were supposed to. So tonight, we want to correct that and recognize the remainder of those. And I'm going to start with our community services department, because that person is here tonight, and I want to recognize Monique Flubel. Monique is our recreation supervisor in our recreation department. I know her as Mo, and she's great to work with, always a friendly face to talk to when I come down here, and Mo has completed 15 years of service with the city, and really something to recognize and be proud of. So Mo, if you want to come up, thank you.
The other three I will announce and make sure that they receive theirs also. We have, well, I need an explanation on this one. Brett Stone also, if you recall, we awarded him his certificate at our last meeting in December. However, I went back and reviewed based on a comment he made. Brett was actually during some hard times, we have, had laid off from the city, but it only lasted for about two months. So we only went back to the, when he started after that two months, and I back and reviewed that, and he would have had 15 years if I would have went back to his original start date. And so I wanted to recognize Brett for actually 15 years of service with the city, and we'll make sure that he gets a new certificate showing that. John Millington works at our water reclamation facility. John has been with the city for 15 years. And then finally, Brian Simkins, really need to recognize Brian, works with our public works department. Some of you may see him, he's known for the guy that's mostly reading our meters, utility, our water meters, if you've seen him out in the field. Brian has been with the city for 25 years, so that's a great achievement to recognize him for. So congratulations to all of them, and we will provide these, I will get these certificates to them, so thank you.
Great. Thank you, Cleve. Yes.
If I could, just quickly.
Yes, of course.
Cleve, I don't know if I'm sure we're going to let you do that again next year. They now get penalty, extra money because he's late, you know. I, I want to acknowledge the 15 years, all the employees, of course, but the importance of the, the knowledge, the institutional knowledge that our employees all bring to the table. Brian, for example, he's known as the meter reader guy, but I've also seen him flagging traffic, digging holes, standing in knee-deep water, and a few others chores as a sign, depending on what year it was. So, and the longevity of our plant operators and such is just really critical, and their willingness to stay with us and help bring up the younger employees underneath them and make sure that they understand the complexities and the importance of their various duties, and they all do it safely. I mean, now, knock on wood, they have an amazing record of working, watching out with, for each other as a team, and it's not to be taken lightly, so thank you. And thank them.
Thank you, Councilmember Acuna. We're going to go ahead now, and, so now, now I'm on seven. Now I'm on seven, okay. Go ahead and move on to public comments. And again, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, and that is within the subject matter of the city council. And I ask for folks that come up to limit their time to three minutes. And first, item 7.1, we're going to do written communications first. So City Manager, do we have any written communications to announce tonight?
None that I think we need to announce. I know there is one item I'm, I'm going to look at with Ms. Jennifer Chapman, but I think she's going to address that, so I won't, I won't do it at this time. The other thing was an email we received, I think all of you received it, from Marion Washburn, and it's related to the Clay Street traffic calming item that's on your agenda. So those are the two written comments we've received.
Okay, great. Thank you, Cleve. So we will now move on to oral communications. Yes? Go for it.
Third time's a charm, right? All right. Brian Chase? Cool. Prepared statement, "Good evening, members of the city council and members of the public." Brian Chase. "I own a business in the Placerville Downtown Central Business District. I'm also now the new president of the Placerville Downtown Association, the PDA. The PDA is a private, nonprofit, 501(c)(6) corporation under the California Corporations Code. As such, the PDA has the right and obligation to advocate for members, member interests before governing bodies as needed. The PDA has been criticized..." as needed. The PDA has been criticized for this type of advocacy. Therefore, the PDA Board of Directors, after consultation with advisors, wishes to protest the involvement of city council member Dennis Thomas in the affairs of the PDA. It is the PDA's board believes that Councilman Thomas has misused his position as a council member to intimidate and influence the PDA. These activities have been more than disruptive and harmful to the PDA. In 2019, the work of the PDA under Tim Taylor's presidency was to bring the organization into compliance with the 501(c)(6) Corporations Code and the bylaws of the organization. He also tried to create a sustainable model for the PDA to be most effective in his advocacy and promotion of the downtown with limited resources. Under Tim's presidency, no official actions or comments were made by the PDA without the board's approval. Tim's immediate predecessor, Dennis Thomas, however, sent a PDA employee into the political arena to advocate before the county board of supervisors on two occasions in the PDA's name. At neither time did Dennis Thomas inform the PDA board or seek the board's approval to do so. The PDA has been and remains more than happy to work with the city council to make our downtown the very best it can be. However, if continued funding from the city requires that the PDA tolerate disruption and manipulation of this nature, then the only responsible recourse for the PDA is to not accept funding from the city until reasonable assurances are made that members of the city council will not, as individuals or collectively, meddle in the private affairs of the PDA. Thank you. I'd also like to submit copies of my statement to the clerk for distribution. And I'm also including the PDA's report on how the grant money was spent in 2019. Thank you."
Thank you. Any other public comments for something not on the agenda?
Mayor, city council members, my name is Don Vanderkar, a 40-year resident of Placerville. And I appeared before this body last month. One thing I've learned during the past 10 years, when I, while I have been working with homeless people, is that they need a safe place to stay where they're not constantly focusing on survival through the night and the cold in a icy, icy hovel and may be robbed and raped. Across the nation, people are recognizing that homelessness is rising and that people need housing first to allow them to be sheltered and then to go on to get health appointments, go to recovery meetings, and get jobs. Because local public agencies have not acted, church and volunteers have developed and operate the pneumatic shelter, an informal winter nighttime shelter program. We work very hard to do what you are not doing. However, I believe the city is mandated to protect public health and safety. The shelter provides a safe, peaceful place to sleep. And the, and we care for our brothers and sisters who are in dire need. Our shelter operates only five nights out of the seven. Maintaining the pneumatic shelter is not easy. We would like to collaborate with the local governments. I have not heard that the city is taking any action regarding the armory. Placerville has an opportunity to work with the state and private contractors to build low-cost housing at that site, thus creating opportunities for more productive lives. Housing is a key step in getting people, getting homeless population off the street and into self-sufficiency. Could you agendize this item in your next meeting so that it would be at least discussed and the pros and cons brought forward regarding the state's proposal? Housing the homeless will improve public health, reduce hospital and policing costs, and in the long run, save the city, the county, and the hospitals significant amounts of money. Several years ago, the city set an example by facilitating the creation of the Old Hangtown Haven. The Haven was so successful that the city forced its closure asserting that the shelter created an attractive nuisance. Town Haven, Inc., still exists and would, with help by the city and others, could establish a 24/7 facility. I am known to be a soft-spoken, kind, and politically correct person. However, I am tired from volunteering at the pneumatic shelter, which makes me be more sarcastic perhaps than usual. Over the past 10 years, many homeless people have died on the streets of this city. We have conducted memorial services for them. Perhaps the city could help us conduct such services and remember the lives of these homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any other comments?
Very difficult to follow that, Speaker. I have something else to talk about. My name is Tom Cumston. And as an aside, I, I am also a member of the Placerville Downtown Association, at least for now. And Mr. Chase does not speak for me. But what I came up here to talk about was my day today. I, I left my law office on Main Street and walked up to Timmy's Brown Bag, planning to get a sandwich and eat it in the parklet. And to my surprise, the parklet was gone. Now, I know that the parklet was a temporary installation. However, I think the six months that it was supposed to be installed ran out some time ago. So, I guess I and others kind of figured that it was going to be there permanently. Timmy was also extremely surprised to find the parklet not there today. I think perhaps since it has become an integral part of his business plan, he should have been informed before it was taken away. I'm just here to say that I think that the parklet was a real asset to Main Street and continued to be actually even into the winter and through the holiday season. Any sunny and even halfway warm day, you will see people out in that parklet, or you did. So, I don't know where it's gone to, but I hope it's in safekeeping, and I hope that it will come back very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments?
Hi, Jennifer Chapman from Clay Street. I had been asked to just present here at city council the request for an agenda item, you know, even 15 minutes for a short presentation on some concepts related to the downtown historic district and a larger concept of a Gold Rush National Historical Park, which has been shared in, you know, different, different other correspondence related to, you know, the Clay Street project and everything. But, but I do think there's a lot of talk, you know, a lot of times about different aspects of, of the historic resources around here. And they really do tie together to a pretty big story that I keep learning more about. And, and I think people would be excited about. And I think, I just think that there really is something pretty amazing that is both east and west of here, you know, this whole incredible corridor. And it, and it's north and south as well with the, the actual rock formation that the gold comes from. But in any case, I'm hoping to have a small amount of time on the agenda, perhaps at the next meeting, to talk about a concept for California Gold Rush National Historical Park. And related to this, I just want to say, the city council was not all at the Planning Commission meeting, but this, this historical district, we have, you know, these four residential historical districts. We don't have Main Street yet designated as a historical district. And of course, we have a house demolition that was passed by the Planning Commission. And it will be appealed. And, you know, we'll see if there is, you know, any more thought on it, you know, from the city. But there's going to continue to be information coming out about it. Again, this house is a very short walk from the Druid Monument. It's tied to the Blairs. You know, it's not just the house, it's the site. It's, it's what you do before you demolish a property to make sure that there's not anything more to learn from that property and the history that's there. We did actually get a letter. There's, there's just more information coming out. There was another buyer involved besides the, the folks that did buy the property. And they apparently were initially making a bid on the property under terms that seemed to be non-negotiable that had to do with starting some kind of restoration within six months. And, you know, what has ended up happening was that, you know, the buyer ended up not doing that. And, and now it's demolition instead of restoration. Not that we're advocating for restoration, but it's just that the, the whole circumstance and story of the real estate transaction has a lot of, you know, new aspects to it, to think about. But the bigger thing is that everything about that house, you know, has been, the city's been all kind of involved in it for a couple of years. And it kind of goes back to this idea of, you know, again, four days' notice to the public for anything that's going to have a decision is a short amount of time, especially when you're dealing with something like this in, in historic resources. And if we had a historic preservation committee still, you know, or a way of at least notifying the public as soon as the city starts dealing with something that might be of interest in a historic district, you know, we could have been kind of working with the city way in advance of now, you know, being up against this, you know, 10-day appeal and all of that.
Jennifer, could you-
Absolutely. So, the whole idea is, you know, work, work with the public. You have incredible community members here, and we can all work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We have any other public comments tonight? Okay, I know there was a couple of, okay.
Kirk Smith, Placerville. I wanted to commend you, Mayor Saragosa, and welcome you.
He put your microphone up a little bit.
You've provided a lot of fresh perspectives in your short tenure. And I'm sure you'll do that kind of analysis in the future for a lot of issues, like some of those addressed by Ms. Chapman. But I'd also point out, one of the things I've mentioned over the years is that sometimes we've had members of the council, after a member of the public has left the lectern and sometimes even left the room, criticize them or attack them, and there's no chance for them to respond. That was true on the night of the sourdough application being considered. There was one, just as an example, a city council member who criticized Heidi, who was then employed by the PDA Association. And it was about her going up and down Main Street with a petition. The name wasn't mentioned, but we all know who that was. And I don't think any member of the public should be criticized or subjected to shame or ridicule for exercising their First Amendment right to petition the government. Sometimes, they might even be right and help, help the council learn some things. In addition, the same night, Dennis Thomas referred to a member of the public by name, Tim Taylor, and said that he had been intimidated by being told that he would be disappointed, he, Tim Taylor, would be disappointed if he didn't vote one particular way. That's odd because we all know on Main Street, there's been a number of people, business owners and property owners have been told by, by Dennis that they should avoid Tim Taylor and Sue Taylor and Kirk Smith to, because it'd be toxic, was the response. And that's been done a lot. Or sometimes coming into a, a public business and saying they're, they're for city council business. So, I guess I wanted to mention that also it would be, another example of real intimidation would be if you posted something in a Facebook page in response to a member of someone's campaign on the other side of your wife and, and said that he should not shake your hands because if he does, he's going to find bloody stumps left. That Facebook page was, that item was taken down the next day. But that might be thought of as intimidation. I think it also mentioned back on, the middle of June, we've had a lot of problems, as I've shared with the chief, about our property. And one of them was on the night of June where there was a car coming up onto the property. This has passed three no trespassing signs, very conspicuous. And I've reported a number of problems about safety before. And there it is, Dennis Thomas and his wife trespassing on the property. And the explanation he gave was, "It's city council business." Specifically, I had before all of you at various times about the vegetation ordinance mentioned that there was obstructions to the utility lines that I couldn't clear the brush and trees without risking taking those lines down. And I, I can't understand why you would do that in the dark, more than 1,000 feet away from the road and 1,000 feet past the other. So, I raised that in conclusion because I think at some point with the kind of things you've heard, and that's just a sample, and in addition to what I'll present, consider sanctions or actions for removal. Because we did have a few years ago, a city council member-
Kirk, could you wrap up, please?
And in conclusion, I would point out that you, a few years ago, considered sanctions for someone else who abused the authority of their office. Thank you.
Jonathan Gainsborough, congratulations, Mayor Saragosa, and city council. I'll speak to the camping ordinance later, but specifically dealing with the, the homeless crisis, I want to read the words of our Lord Jesus Christ from Matthew 25 and to put them into the record. Matthew 25, verse 31, following, "When the Son of Man returns in his glory and all the angels with him, he will sit on his throne in heavenly glory. All the nation, all the nations, all, all the nations and their inhabitants will be gathered before him, and he will separate the people one from another, as a shepherd separates his sheep from the goats. He will put the sheep on his right hand and his goats on his left. Then the king will say to those on his right hand, the sheep, 'Come, you who are blessed by my Father, take your inheritance, the kingdom prepared for you since the creation of the world. For I was hungry and you gave me something to eat; I was thirsty and you gave me something to drink. I was homeless and you gave me shelter.'" I'll repeat that. "I was hungry and you gave me something to eat; I was thirsty and you gave me something to drink." He goes on after that with six categories. That's the second, first and second. The third is, "I was homeless. I was homeless, and you gave me shelter." He also says, "I was sick and in prison and without proper clothing." So, I want to speak for the homeless tonight that are out there. Tonight, they have no shelter. One of the collisions of an underwater iceberg is the homeless situation nationally and statewide. But the other iceberg that is colliding, that we are not addressing, is the mental illness situation. Anyone who works with the homeless, including our governor and including our president, the legislatures statewide and nationally, know that the homeless mental illness situation has deteriorated exponentially, dectupally. Anyone working with them, it's undeniable. Now, this last weekend, our governor not only passed $650 million more for, for homeless initiatives, but he passed a law saying that any property deeded by the state for a long-term lease, such as the Placerville Armory, not only should be, but must be used before affordable housing, which is definitely a worthy endeavor, must be used for a low-barrier homeless shelter. That applies to Placerville, our dearly beloved city. I love on the blackboard back there, I love Placerville. You all love Placerville. I've lived here 42 years. I love Placerville. Placerville needs to love its homeless to work city and county together, as Sacramento has learned to do, and has created multiple shelters with more on the way. And I pray a heavenly New Year for every Placiviliun, everyone in this room, and also for our homeless. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any other comments this evening? Okay, I know there was a couple questions, want to look to, to staff on. I think the first one that I, just go down the list here, on the, the parklet. I know it was, we were going to store it away for, for winter. And I think that's, that's what we've done, correct?
Terry Zeller, Community Services Director, Mayor and Council. I just want to reiterate what the Community Services Department and along with Public Works has done. Our Parks and Facilities Superintendent last week personally called upon Timmy to inform him that the parklet was going to be moved over the winter. So, he was given some warning. And there was some discussion at this venue, a couple of different council meetings about the parklet and what its fate would be. And we did discuss some alternatives to how it's going to be placed in the spring. But it is tarped for protection over the winter, so we can try to keep its durable life as long as possible. And I can answer any other questions.
Thank you, Terry. And then I, we had a couple of comments, questions regarding the armory, both in terms of affordable housing and as well as now as a potential, based on Governor Newsom's budget rollout, in terms of potentially for homeless housing. I don't know if staff, any comments on- I don't know if staff, any comments on either of those?
Staff can provide a few comments on that. As the council's aware, the city did apply for SB2 planning grant fundings for affordable housing. And due to, based on our population, the city should receive $160,000 to pursue planning for affordable housing. We are making the application to look at three sites for affordable housing, for apartment complexes, to serve as affordable housing. And that would be to try and create a situation where a project can be turnkey and be done ministerially. In other words, not discretionary. So, we're looking at hiring consultants. We'll use that money to hire consultants to do the sequel evaluation process, and also prepare what we would call objective design standards, because that's typically been a big issue with the city, when projects come in, that they meet some minimum design quality criteria. So, we'll create those, and so if a project meets those, then we can approve it ministerially. So, one of those three sites is the Placerville Armory. Staff's been working closely with the State Housing and Community Development, and they are working with the State Department of General Services. Right now, the Placerville Armory is what's known as a Tier Two, as opposed to Tier One, so more emphasis given on the Tier One. We're hoping, at least we've been told by HCD, if the city can show some initiative and support of the Placerville Armory being used for affordable housing, they may move it up to the Tier One. But we are including that, in that site, and that's currently where we are. Staff is not aware of any new directive from the governor regarding that site, so that's news to us, but we're certainly happy to take a look at that. But the site is, we're looking at it being for an affordable housing project site.
Great. Thank you. Cleve?
Can I just add to that a little bit?
Yeah.
We have also met with two different affordable housing groups, developers, that are interested in that site, and so there are some things we have been looking at. Want to also emphasize that the initial action that the governor took to make those sites available for affordable housing excluded the opportunity to use them for emergency housing or temporary housing. The most recent statement that he made in his budget detail seems to be contrary to that, that they perhaps could be used for emergency shelters. But to my knowledge, there's no detail out on that yet. It was a statement made as part of his budget message. So, we can look into that and continue to review that, but the previous action that was taken did not allow that to be used for an emergency shelter, only for permanent affordable housing.
Great. Thank you. And I know, and I've seen the same thing, there does seem to be a little bit of inconsistency in what the governor has originally said, and this kind of, two things coming together for him, his need to want to build three and a half million new homes by 2025, and the real sort of...
Reality.
The reality of that, plus the ability to house, you know, over 100,000 homeless people throughout our state as well. And so, there may be some inconsistency in what he's put out in his January budget versus what came out late last year as well. So, we will have staff look into that as well, on that issue. And then, I think the last issue is what Ms. Chapman brought up, which was her request for the ability to speak to the council on a potential California historical park that would encompass some parts of the city and buildings as well. And what I would say, their council, if you would be okay with this, would be that we would take up that conversation under request for future agenda items, which would be under item 14. So, everyone, okay. So, we will discuss that then. Thank you. Okay.
You know, I, real quick...
Go ahead, Patty.
You were talking about the governor, and maybe, Michael, you know more about it, but what came across my emails and on my, is all the money that's sitting in a, not being used. I mean, we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars. Do you know anything about that?
I mean, staff might even know more than I do, in terms of when some of those funds will be released. And it's, you know, some of it goes to the counties, to the continuum of care. Councilman, Vice Mayor Thomas may also have some comments there as well. But it's, yeah, there are funding pots in a lot of different places. A lot of it's still in, I think, in the planning grant stages, where we, I think, where we've seen sort of what I would call really slow pace.
Well, I didn't quite understand it. It was almost like they hadn't been applied for, the way, you know, the way it was worded to me.
Some of those new monies may be, very well be that way, because it will be apportioned out on a population basis. I mean, really, the big eleven cities are going to get the lion's share of that money. So, Los Angeles is a little...
You're going to go again.
All those, and then the rest of the money will be divvied up amongst the rest of the counties and cities. I don't think we will see anything directly. It will probably go to El Dorado County and to our continuum of care. And then, we'll have to work with them. I don't know, if anyone else has any comments on that? No? Okay. Okay. I will go ahead then and move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call, unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Does, do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move for approval.
I would actually like to pull an item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'd like to pull item 8.5.
Okay. That is on the...
On the contract with El Dorado County.
On the homeless.
Yes.
Gotcha. And we are also going to pull item 8.4. We have a noticing requirement there, and so that item will be, appear on a later council agenda.
Then I will, I will...
I'll move the balance to the consent calendar. And... One second.
No, that was a second, wasn't it?
That was.
Marx was a second. I just...
You moved it?
I made the motion.
Oh, I just wanted to say aye, but I didn't know.
Well, I was going to...
Aye, what?
Well, I wanted to change it.
Oh, I see.
I wanted to deduct the 8.4 and 8.5.
Okay. And does, before I call for a roll call, does any member of the, of our public wish to make any comments on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and, can we have roll call?
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When 8.4 comes back, will we get a status of the update on the tim fees, the actual process? We don't want to...
I will defer, I want to ask our city manager to answer that.
We probably should not do that tonight, right? City attorney, because of the noticing requirement, but...
I'm just curious, because I know it's been, it's been for full review, so we can have our just, not our justifications.
Right. This is, this is just the annual update, is all we're doing here, and we're still working on that. We're still waiting for the county to forget, to finish the traffic modeling plan, is that correct, Rebecca? So that we can do the final work that we need to do.
Thank you. Okay. So, we're going to then move on to item nine, so items, items pulled from the consent calendar, which would be item 8.5. Authorize a contribution of $10,000 to El Dorado County for extension of funding agreement to provide countywide homeless coordinator services in the amount of $10,000. And I believe Mr. Morris has this one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item actually came to you a little over a year ago, in October of 2018, and we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the county to help fund a contract with a company known as Homebase, to assist us with coordination of homeless issues and to help us basically get where we needed to be to apply for more funding. As you're aware, over the last two years now, we've received close to $2 million, or just over $2 million in funding, which is going into programs. And I've listed some of those programs, I'm not going to go through those, that that funding has helped to do, and there's more programs that they are, they are still developing there. When we signed the MOU in October of 2018, there was a provision that we could jointly agree to extend that for one more year, to continue the contract with Homebase. Homebase is still working with the county. In fact, I was contacted by Daniel Delmone of the county, just before the holidays, to be on a committee to consider and make policy recommendations for their strategic plan. And that is the main process that Homebase is working on right now, is their strategic plan. I participated on that with, with Don Ashton and, I'm sorry, Martin. I knew it was Martin, I was trying to, from Marshall Hospital, and I'm trying to remember who else was there, Martin, with us. Oh, the city manager from South Lake Tahoe. We made up that committee to help develop policy statements for the strategic plan, and they're gone back and are working on those. So, that'll be, that process will take the good part of this year to develop that strategic plan, but will help us focus on where we're going with the homeless and developing additional programs related to the funding we've already received, and enable us to apply for more funding for the future, for different programs that we may want to do. So, what is being asked for tonight? You see the letter from the, from the county that is attached to the report, requesting that we continue with helping fund that, an additional $10,000 for this year. And that will assist them in keeping that contract going with Homebase, to continue the work that they are doing. So, with that, I can answer any questions you might have related to that.
Thank you, Cleve. Council, questions? Comments?
Well, the reason that I wanted to pull this is because I think it was a, for one, it's a really important summary of all of the programs that we are currently offering in conjunction with the county, and programs that are upcoming and we're working towards. And I thought that it was of importance for the public to know. And I also just wanted to say that I fully support pitching in with the county on this contract to extend in this effort, so.
Did you want to name the programs?
Sure. So...
I mean, since, you know, that's...
There's a lot of them. There's supportive housing program that helps people that are on probation. There's the Tahoe Youth and Family Services, Lilliput Families and Whole Person Learning. That's a supportive housing program. That's, it currently has a grant for $325,000, and that's helping people between the ages of 18 and 24. And coordinated entry, intake and outreach into available homeless programs. There's $325,000 being put to use there, to help coordinate resources for people in need. And then, upcoming is going to be nearly $1 million to set aside for temporary housing programs, which is really important, and it's something that comes up a lot, and I just want people to know that it is on the horizon, and we are working towards it. $273,000 for rapid rehousing and homeless outreach, and $83,000 for permanent supportive housing. There's $50,000 upcoming for domestic violence bonus, and $1.3 million for homeless housing assistance programs. So, work is being done on this, and I just, I thought it was important for the community to know.
That's a good idea.
Thank you, Kara. Do we have any questions for staff at this point?
No, I just have a comment. This is a, this is a painfully slow bureaucratic process that we are required to go through in order to get more money. And, and it is, it is challenging to sit by and have to, to watch us develop these programs, and at the end, it is what we need to do, and how we need to expend our money, and how we need to work with this Homebase program to guide our county staff through that process. And, and it is worthwhile, it will pay off. It doesn't seem like we're, the benefits are being reaped. We don't see feet on the ground in our community, and, and it is, it's disconcerting, and I know that, that, that feeling I have should be abated soon. They are in the process of, finishing process of hiring two entry coordinators.
Right.
And one for Tahoe and one for the West Slope here. So, these people will be feet on the ground, and we'll be working with those to help guide them along with the hot team. So, a lot of things are, you know, where we've been, our police department has taken the lion's share of the work in our town to help our homeless, and have been very successful at that. And so, I look forward to the partnership with the county and see how they work with the city as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments? We'll go ahead now and open it up to the public, if anyone has any comments on item 8.5. If you could state your name for the record as well. Thank you.
Ms. Mack, I'm in Placerville. I'm just wondering if this is an extension, was it originally $100,000 that was put aside for this program originally, and there were five entities that contributed to it? Okay, so it's like half of what we contributed originally. My question is, is this enough? It's sort of a little different than what I thought originally. I thought the money was going to fund a coordinator, but I gather it's funding a company that's now looking for coordinators? Is that the way to look at this?
Well, Mack, you get it directed to, questions to the council, and then we'll get, we'll get a response from staff.
That is directed to the council.
Thank you. Thank you. Cleve, you have any comments on that?
Yeah, that's, you're fairly accurate, Mack, with your explanation there. The original was, they were looking for approximately $100,000. That was for year one, and then more for year two, is my understanding. You see the contract in here, I think it says $86,000, which was a little under that. We originally were asked to contribute $20,000 the first year. We agreed to $10,000 rather than $20,000. And then, they've come back and asked us, and additional $10,000 in the second year to continue the contract for a second year. And they, the Homebase does do homeless coordination assistance with that. One of the main things they are doing right now, however, they will supervise the coordinator position, the, I'll call it, the person that will actually be out there meeting and doing things. That person hasn't been hired yet. As you noted in my report, they're about four to six weeks away, they're just finishing the final steps of that. And that person will be on board. In addition to that, Homebase, as I mentioned, will be helping us develop the strategic plan for the county.
Thank you, Cleve. Do we have any other comments on 8.5?
Jonathan Gainsborough, Mayor and Council. I've been going to continuum of care meetings over the last at least four years, monthly in Sacramento. I'm glad you're teamed up with Homebase. Homebase is, to a degree, the, perhaps a national orchestral symphonic director and hire of the symphony for the homeless services. I just want to mention one thing and not use all the time, which would be a New Year miracle in itself for a preacher, that working with Sacramento Steps Forward and their $15 million annually of HUD finance, which is what Homebase and Opportunity Knox for El Dorado County is going to help you get millions of dollars. But in the immediate short term, I want to encourage you to not only develop a two-by-two working-together city and county, as Sacramento has learned to do over the last three or four years. They do a quarterly two-by-two, not just a two-by-two from between us, between you all and Tahoe, which is definitely necessary, but, and I'm watching that clock, and it will end early. But that Sacramento Steps Forward with the 30 or 40 helping organizations, everything from Volunteers of America to Wind Youth Shelter, to dozens of organizations, they still, with hundreds of thousands of dollars of computer programming that they've spent on, cannot locate where there is, in Sacramento's third of a million people, where there is an empty bed. So, I just want to encourage you to focus as well on the short term. Marshall Hospital saved my life, and probably all of ours at different times, and is so excellent, and we're so blessed to have that, and we're so blessed to be in Placerville. And that's polygraphed true from my heart. But the, you cannot have a hospital without an emergency... But you cannot have a hospital without an emergency room. And so, Homebase and everything that we're working at from HUD, we have to have more of an immediate response for the people who will be out in the drenching, freezing winter storm tomorrow night in our beloved cities. No bless oblige is a concept, and the time's running out, I see that, Brother Mayor, means we've been put in a position of nobility. We've got to use that in the immediate as well as the short, medium, and long range. God bless you with five seconds to go.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Maureen Dion Perry. I'm working with the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Homelessness in this Western Slope area. My question is, why can't we come up with $20,000 to, why was that reduced last year? So, that was my question for you. It seems like such a small amount of money to go into a very important process that we're working on at this time for our city and county. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and close public comment. Cleve, anything on the $20,000, or do you have any comments there?
There was a discussion during our budget process of 1819, that was almost two years ago now, and prioritization of all things. I'm not saying that was not a high priority. It was, that's why we continued with the $10,000, worked with the county to make sure that they would still continue the agreement if we reduced to the $10,000. That was agreed upon, that they would continue with that, and I don't think it reduced any of the work that was done, it's just that they funded a little bit more from the county side than with us reducing our amount, so.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Well, there were others that contributed too.
There were. Marshall Hospital was part of it, I believe, and South Lake Tahoe and the county. There may have been more, I think those, that's right, Barton Hospital also, yeah.
So, they were able to get enough funding?
Thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to the council. Do we have, I want to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the item.
Second?
We have a first and a second. Further discussion, seeing none, go ahead and call roll call.
Mayor Saragossa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We are going to go ahead and move on to item 10, ordinances. Item 10.1, waive the second reading and introduce an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 19 of the Placerville City Code regulating camping on public or private property, and the, Chief Ortega has this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just waiving the second reading of the ordinance. Based on your council's request from last time, we changed the end time for camping from 8:00 PM to sunset so that it fits for the rest of the year, which was the council's pleasure last time. I'm not going to go too much into the legal ramifications or the purposes of that unless there are any questions from me, and I'll refer any legal questions to our city attorney.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have much to add. We talked about this quite length last time, as the chief mentioned, their council desired to make a change in the language, and we changed the hours that daytime camping would not be allowed from 8:00 AM to sunset, and that was changed in two places, and that went to section of the ordinance. This ordinance is still, as I mentioned last time, designed to try and provide a place for someone who is without shelter to go when no shelters are available, so that we can still enforce prohibitions of camping where it's specified in the ordinance that is prohibited. There is a place where they can go, and hopefully that will satisfy the Boise decision.
Thank you. Questions for staff at this moment? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anyone who wishes to comment on 10.1?
Jonathan Gainsborough, the Mayor and Counsel. Four weeks or thereabouts ago, I was here, a year ago, and advised the Mayor and Council to not pass its constitutionally illegal, I repeat, constitutionally, U.S. Constitution, illegal new supposedly revised anti-camping homeless ordinance. I do so again tonight, loving Placerville as much as you all do, and all of us in the room or those watching. The ordinance was then, and supposedly changed, but the picayune, minuscule change from only being able to put up tents from eight at night to eight in the morning, and changing that to from sundown to eight in the morning, is a minnow compared to a pod of whales. It is unconstitutional, according to Martin versus Boise, to restrict the homeless as a categorization of people anywhere on public property, whether it be federal, state, county, or city property. Now, the lawyers in Boise took on the U.S. Constitution, and they lost. If Placerville takes on the U.S. Constitution, it will lose. I do not want Placerville to lose. Now, we do need to restrict fire usage, we need to have public sanitation, we should not have lost Lumston Park. There are things to do, but you don't operate and amputate a leg or two to take out an appendix, as was taken out of me when I was three years old. We cannot, Boise says this, that it is a violation of the Eighth Amendment of the U.S. Bill of Rights and Constitution and a cruel and unusual punishment. Let me repeat that. A cruel and unusual punishment to dare to move, to threaten, to arrest, or in any way move the homeless unless you, one, have a shelter, and secondly, we have a bed to move them to. As my friend Mark Maron, nationally known civil rights attorney in Sacramento, says, the Martin-Boise decision is telling all of us that we cannot fix the homelessness crisis by criminalizing the homeless. I urge you strongly not to go into a national decision where Boise has now been used to establish the Martin-Boise decision for the eight western states of the federal district court. It doesn't matter what your lawyer says, the U.S. Constitution says there is a freedom of speech, choice, and freedom of movement, and now federally, the U.S. Supreme Court has refused to reconsider Martin-Boise. They are saying, shelter the homeless, don't penalize or criminalize them. God bless.
Thank you.
Hi, Maureen Dion Perry again. Thank you, counsel and mayor, staff. The last meeting, I advocated for changing the camping time from, you know, 8:00 PM to sunset. The more I've thought about that, the more I think it's really not contributing to the aim of this ordinance, which is to get people off the streets. So, what we're, what this ordinance will create is a situation where you have a place for people to camp, then at 8:00 in the morning, they have to pack up their belongings, and where will they go? They'll walk down Main Street, they'll hang around in all the usual places around town with all their belongings because they have no place to leave them until they can reset up at 8:00 PM the next night. So, the more I thought about it, I really feel like I'm not sure that this ordinance, in addition to criminalizing, is not going to get us the outcome that we want in terms of both providing a safe place for the homeless for the evening, which I think is critical because it's pretty wild out there at night, and instead, what about we not reconsider establishing the Hangtown Haven concept in these locations so that people can truly leave their stuff there, or even better, have lockers that would be installed in these areas so that people could actually have a place to store their stuff because it could get stolen if it's left and they go in to get some food or whatever? So, that, I would really encourage you to consider that there may be some better ways to do, to achieve the goal that you're trying to achieve, to provide safe, a safe community for our citizens, to provide a place for people without a shelter to camp, and to do that in a way pending. I'm participating in the continuum of care, and, you know, I've been nagging Daniel Delmonte about how do we do it now, and now he's leaving. I don't know if you've heard that yet, but he has resigned, and so that's, I don't know what's going to happen with the process. So, anyway, I would encourage you to reconsider that this is a pro-camping ordinance as opposed to an anti-camping ordinance, and that certainly people who are breaking the law in other ways need to have legal consequences. So, thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Peg Vanderkar. I'm a 40-year resident of Placerville, and, did you, I'm sorry, sometimes I'm told I don't speak loudly enough. Hopefully that helps. First of all, I echo agreement with what Maureen said, but that's not what I came up to say. I just read the ordinance for the first time tonight, and there's wording about something, something, something if there is no, unless there's shelter to go to. I either run or co-run two of the nights out of the five shelters at two different churches, and I know that for shelter in any one night, which of course excludes Tuesday and Wednesday, there's only room for between 20 to 35 people in those shelters. Plus, the shelter, people coming to the shelter have to keep their behavior within limits, which are all limits that you would agree to too, for safety of the volunteers and the other shelter attendees, or they get banned, and some folks during the year do get banned. So, then there is no shelter for them out of the shelter system that works right now, which is minimal. So, I would encourage thinking about a permanent place that can provide 24/7 shelter stop kind of transition for people coming through. We have 150 people registered for shelter this year, and only about 20 to 35 come in any one night. There are a lot of people coming through or minimally using it for various reasons. We don't ask why they're using it. If they behave properly, they can stay. That's, those are our limits. If they don't behave properly, they cannot stay. So, there is not sufficient shelter for all the people that are homeless in any one night. Just want you to remember that. So, I'm not sure how the camping ordinance would work even if it was working, and Maureen's vision of camping, picking up and walking the streets during the day is exactly what happens now and will continue to happen. Thank you.
Kirk Smith. What prompted me to come up again is because I heard this wonderful suggestion about getting lockers. Isn't it wonderful? The difficulty is, where are you going to get the money? So, there's nothing to stop members of the public from doing it themselves, for example, at a local church. They've got the property, install it. But when you start to think about all the steps that are involved to get a locker set up, how you're going to manage it, when it is that somebody has to remove their things, who's going to clean it out, who's going to assume the responsibility for the property that's left there, it's complicated. I may not like the way the historic issue was handled about a demolition permit, but I can tell you that a tremendous amount of time went into preparing that document. It was a lot of work. We just don't have the staff, that I know of, there's lots of issues that are around. So, I just thought that I'd open the door to those in the private sector to do that with local churches and other community groups, where you can set up a locker and do those kind of things there. I know the last time I was here on this subject, someone made a great suggestion about the Catholic Church, that I'd never knew had closed its doors to at least the matter of letting people use places to sleep there. And so, I told one person who was here, here's my card, call me and I'll go down and talk to the priest with you. Unfortunately, I didn't take into consideration, the guy didn't have a phone, you know, I had to borrow one, so it's difficult when he leaves me a message. But that's where I think these kind of things can be first addressed. Plus, you voted money to provide for a coordinator, so that's a good place to get that idea bubbling too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kirk. Good evening, Pat.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, and I may be going against the grain here, but I think we need this ordinance, just like the shelters that operate now, they have rules that say if you misbehave, you can't be here. If you come drunk or high, you can't be here. We also need to be able to protect the resources that we provide for the public, and that's what this ordinance does. This is a public safety ordinance. This is not a anti-homeless ordinance. It's a public safety ordinance that says our public parks are parks, they are not campgrounds. It says our El Dorado Trail is a trail, it is not a place to pitch your tent. It says our downtown city streets are not an appropriate place to put a tent, and they're not. The ordinance is correct, these are not appropriate places to pitch a tent. And it goes one step further, and it actually provides three places for people to go. I think that this is badly needed. I've seen the mess that is in San Francisco and Sacramento, and I don't think we want to see that here in Placerville. Lumston Park was destroyed. It wasn't, it was, it could have been a nice park. It was a nice park at one time, but it has been destroyed, and it's been destroyed because people didn't obey the rules of how you behave in public. Instead, it became a place where people tore down things that were there, inappropriately used the facilities that were there, left trash and needles and condoms all over, and we cannot, that's not how our society expects to have our public places maintained. That is not a safe place anymore for people to go. We want our parks to be safe, so that when I go past the city park and I see moms with their little kids on the play equipment, that's an appropriate use of that space, and it needs to be maintained. And having an ordinance that says you may not use that as your personal camping space, this is not designed for that, I think is an appropriate thing to do.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers Don Vanderkar, not to prolong this too long, but I just want to point out something. Hangtown Haven Inc., when it, Hangtown Haven, when it operated, provided security, storage facility, opportunities for transition out by transportation to services such as AA and medical and mental services.
and medical and mental services. Hangtown Haven, Inc., still exists. We would welcome opportunity to work with any entity to create a new, a revised form of Hangtown Haven. There would be some costs involved, yes, but it would get people off the street and provide all of these benefits, especially the one of transitioning out of homelessness.
Thank you for your comments.
Peg Vanderkar, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak again, but I had a minute left on my minute, my three. So I'd like to just say, I'm not particularly against the ordinance. I think it's a stopgap measure that moves toward something. I just want to point, wanted to point out that it won't serve the long-term needs. That's something that transitionally houses people that has security and a way and a 24/7 security for belongings and such where they don't have to be thinking about what they are going to, where they're going to sleep and what they're going to do during the day. And some days it don't even have bus service. I drove people to wherever there was nothing on Christmas Day and that was a very sad experience. No buses, nothing open. And it was cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, John.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. You will have fun. John Clarici, resident of Placerville. Okay. I'm in favor of this ordinance. I think it's a good idea. I think you should vote for it. I'm curious to see what happens because I think one of three things could happen. Oh, and by the way, I think we should have a, I think we should have some kind of a shelter. And I think we should take the upper room and plug it into the shelter in the same place. And then I think we should close the public, the upper room forever because the upper room has been detrimental to Upper Broadway. Upper Broadway didn't look like it used to. It does now, back in the day, back before the upper room and certainly back probably for the last ten years. And anybody that wants to argue with me about that, I will argue with them all day long. I have lived here long enough and anybody that's lived here long enough knows what that has happened. So I'm in favor of doing that. And I think we should move it right over to where, as I mentioned before, over where the county is, right on their front doorstep so they can start taking some responsibility for this besides just creating bureaucracies and collecting money. I think there's an interesting experiment that goes on here because I think what might happen is this. Maybe if you have to pack up your house every day, put it on your back, walk around town. And it's always interesting. They always say, well, you know what could happen? They'll just end up walking around town. And then they, and it sounds like this is an awful thing. And it would be, and that's the problem. They're actually using the example as the reason why the homelessness is a problem in this town. And we're not talking about the human tragedy of homelessness. We're talking about the actual thing of homelessness in Placerville. So you might decide, you know what, there's a bunch of programs out there that might help me to get off of drugs, alcohol, help me with my mental health. If I'm a veteran, I can get some help. And I might start on a path to not being homeless anymore. That's one possibility. The other possibility is they will break the law and then they'll talk to the chief. Or they'll leave. And you know what? Quite honestly, as a resident of Placerville, has watched this problem get worse and worse and listen to the advocacy community want to give away public property in Placerville and do all this stuff in Placerville. You notice how no one ever says that the Hangtown Haven should be in Cameron Park or El Dorado Hills or Diamond Springs or every, anyplace else? It's always this town. This town pays a huge price for homelessness because I guarantee you, most of the homeless people in Placerville do not come from Placerville. They come from somewhere else. It probably is true because it's probably the same percentage as everything else that happens in Placerville. Very few things in Placerville that it like sales tax and all that other stuff. We all know the numbers. So this might happen and it might actually be a benefit. There might be a benefit to doing this. So I think you folks should stay the course. I think you should stop, these people should stop asking the public to pay for things like lockers and other things. I think we should go down to the Catholic Church and ask them why they don't open their doors to the homeless every day, not just one day a week, every freaking day. They have facilities down there. You run up and down Highway 50, there's these giant churches with huge parking lots and halls and cooking facilities and probably bathrooms. And you know what everyone has in common, almost every one of them? Every night, they're shut up tight. The advocacy community should start taking this on, feeding them as easy, as I've always said, feeding them is easy. It's the easy thing to do. You do it once a day, you feed somebody and then you go home. Housing people is a challenge because that's hands-on and that's why there's only five churches left in the nomadic shelter because they have run headlong into this. And I don't blame them. This is a good ordinance. Pass it and let's see what happens. Maybe, maybe some good will come from it. I'm hopeful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to close public comments and bring them back to the council. Comments?
I have one question.
Questions?
And I'm this, I'm sort of saying this tongue-in-cheek. Cleve, why did we close Hangtown Haven? What was?
We told them originally that this, it was a one-year pilot program that we were going to do and that it was only going to be one year.
Right.
We did learn some things from it. There were, I will agree with Mr. Vanderkar, there were some good things that came out of that and some lessons learned from it. But we followed through and said after one year, we were going to close it.
I just want that because everybody keeps wanting us to open Hangtown Haven again. There was a reason that we had to close it down. And it's not easy to operate. We ADA rules, I mean, we're governed, we're still governed. If we did something like that, we take on a whole lot of responsibilities that the state demands and everybody else. And I really, that's why I'm asking this question. I know the answer, but I just want it brought forth as to why we cannot have Hangtown Haven. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Any other comments?
I have a comment. I'll, I'll keep it kind of brief because we talked about this pretty extensively at the last meeting. But one thing that's been kind of, I think overlooked in this discussion is, and correct me please, Mr. Driscoll, if I'm wrong, but this is replacing the original ordinance that banned all camping everywhere. And that ordinance was deemed completely unenforceable by the Boise ruling, which left our law enforcement with no tools whatsoever to deal with the amount of camps and litter and garbage and human waste that has been kind of taking over our city. So this ordinance does two things. It, one actually provides for camping when the other ordinance did not provide for any camping. And it gives our law enforcement the tools that they need to enforce some rules that protect public safety and the interest of the rest of the community and our residents. So that's, that's all my comments.
Thank you, Kara.
I had a question first, yeah?
Yes.
Ask our city attorney to comment on the concerns about the constitutionality of this item and the time that you have spent reviewing the Boise decision.
Actually, I started following the Boise decision probably four years ago or more because there were certain preliminary decisions in that Boise case that led up to what we refer to as the Boise decision. But that case has been going on since 2010 in various forms of one of another. So I've been following it for quite some time and I couldn't have said it any better than what Councilmember Taylor said regarding this ordinance and what it does. I think the, the issue is that some people tend to read the Boise decision as much broader and far-reaching than it really is. The opinion itself makes it clear that it's a limited decision and it really only held that municipal ordinances that criminalize sleeping, laying, or sitting in all, all public places, when there is no shelter available, would be unconstitutional. And the word "all" is, is the emphasis there. The Boise decision, which amended, was amended, but it also said this in the initial one in September of, September, I got my years mixed up, September of 2018. And then last year in April of 2019, there was an amendment to it, which really wasn't substantial, but it was on one of the rehearing requests. But in there, and I'll read from the decision, the court stated very clearly, "Nor do we suggest that a jurisdiction with insufficient shelter can never criminalize the act of sleeping outside. Even where shelter is unavailable, an ordinance prohibiting sitting, lying, sleeping outside at particular times," which we're using, "or particular locations might well be constitutionally permissible." So we've tried to use that in molding this ordinance to fit within the framework of the Boise decision. Of importance is the definition in the ordinance of available shelter. It talks when a shelter is available and when a shelter is not available. And I know one of the speakers addressed homeless people who don't want to go to a shelter because they don't want to conform to the rules of behavior. That doesn't mean if somebody is in that situation, they don't want to conform to the rules of behavior, shelter is available to them. They've just chosen not to use it. And our ordinance addresses those issues. So I don't know what else we can do. The court hasn't given us a lot of guidance in terms of where we want, they want to see us go with this. The decision is a limited one and because of that, it doesn't have a lot of guidance. So we've tried to use what they gave us to craft an ordinance that hopefully will be constitutionally permissible.
Have any other cities that you know of pursued?
The, the city of Redding has a similar ordinance, which has been in effect now for well over a year. Their ordinance is similar. Others have tried to do certain things, designating maybe other places that might be shelters. But majority of cities are like we used to be, prohibiting it in all or silent.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
I'd like to acknowledge everybody's concern and desire to help. And it is a tough, it is a challenging issue. Being in the healthcare industry, I see, I see people come and go from a variety of different places in their life and, and also experience the challenges they have with them. With that said, we are still a city that we need to help manage our assets. And I, and I use that, and I don't use that lightly. It is, we have people in our community that, that are using our space, in their space, to, to live in. And in, in choosing, and most of them are choosing to be homeless. It is, and I know this by personal experience. I've known a few that have actually chosen homelessness as a choice and live in a tent under a bridge. And, and they also made $2,000, $3,000 a month. And yet, are we responsible to be cleaning up after them? Are we responsible to be managing their waste, whether it's needles or drugs or paraphernalia? It, it is, it is a challenge. And what our goal here to do is one, to abide by the, in my opinion, abide by the Boise, the Boise.
Decision.
Decision. And, and recognize the challenges that some people have as well as, from another point of view, work to help them become not homeless. And, and I think that we are actively doing that with the county. And I think, you know, there's a lot of pressure laid on the city to do something. And, and basically what you're asking us to do is spend your tax dollars. And how do you want us to spend your tax dollars? And do you want us to come and ask you for more tax dollars because we don't have enough money to fix this problem? We just don't. And, and if, and if you, and if, and if those that, that wish us to do this, I think we should get together and talk about how much money it would take and then we should go out and ask for people for the money. Because this city does not have extra money sitting around to do this. Some people talk about our budget and where we spend, but you know, it's, it's tough. I, I strongly believe that the homeless have opportunities in this community to seek shelter. And not to seek shelter, but to seek an avenue for getting out of homelessness. Our hot team is going out there practically begging people to come, let us help you. So it's those that are seeking to, those that are choosing homelessness that is really is concerning. And frankly, there, we should have rules for them, not allow them to destroy our public property. And also give them the opportunity to have a place to sleep at night and give our police department an opportunity to help control the environment that they're creating and, and help them move, move along and find another place to sleep or the same place at night, whatever, however that works out. But our police department need, needs the tools to, to also help address this. So that's my comments for now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Before I make my comments, Chief, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Just a couple of things so I don't take up as much time as I did last time. You've talked about the hot team and the care and concern that they provide and that's ongoing and will continue to be ongoing. And as I said last time, this is not an ordinance that's designed for us to be able to arrest the homeless. It's not our goal. Anybody that has heard me talk for more than a minute knows that, that is not our ultimate goal. Our goal is to get these folks to help. It was mentioned by one of the speakers, the mental health crisis, that, that's intertwined with this. That's part of our engagement with the county and the hot team in trying to get this. It was kind of alluded to that, you know, what the long-term campers can do to our parks, our trails that are used by families and, and other folks that run in the morning or in the evenings or the students that walk to school. They should not have to come across people that make them feel unsafe. They should not have to walk across raw sewage or needles. And that's what we're really trying to prevent. Kind of back to Mr. Clarici's comments, we are trying to prevent our city from being destroyed. And with all due respect to other cities that were mentioned in Northern California, I won't mention them, but I go to those, some of those cities regularly and they're terrible and they're in terrible condition. And in spite of the millions of dollars that are spent, nothing changes in some of those other cities. So we're simply trying to protect our city and more importantly, protect our homeless, which includes protecting them and preventing them from becoming victims from other homeless individuals. And I think that's the part of the conversation that gets missed at times. So, and if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer those from the council.
Thank you, Chief. I'll go ahead and a couple of comments. I, I think, I mean, there's, we're, we're dealing with an issue that's well beyond the scope of Placerville, although we obviously have to deal with what, what we have here within our city limits. But make no mistake, this is a huge national and certainly a state crisis here in California. What we've done so far, the billions of dollars that have been spent across the state, we can all look to it and we can see that we have made absolutely no dent in the homeless crisis throughout our state. Billions of dollars have been spent and I will repeat it, we have made zero dent. In fact, the population has increased. So for me, the question then becomes, what are we doing? How are we spending it? And we can throw more money at something, but is it actually getting better? Potentially it could be. My guess will be that we could probably spend another $5 billion a year under what we're currently doing as a state and it will probably still have the same problems. And that's because outpatient treatments are just never going to actually provide the results that we need, even if we do, even if we were to get to housing for everybody. Our DMH facilities, Department of Mental Health are currently filled with sex offenders. We actually need more DMH facilities throughout the state. If we're going to make an investment that actually has an impact, we have to reopen our mental health facilities and we have to get people in 24 by 7, not two hours a day when they come out from a creek or they come out from a side of an alley and then go back. That is not going to be an answer to it. Some of these big cities have done, like, you know, last year, and I, I've mentioned this before, Los Angeles spent $600 million on services for the homeless and their homeless population increased by 16%. That is not a recipe for how we are supposed to do things. And this is just a, and so if you take that and you extrapolate that down to Placerville, we aren't going to have the, the same effects either, just obviously on a much smaller basis, even if we were to spend a lot more money. So we have to do what we need to do in order to protect the residents, the property and the livelihoods of people here in Placerville. You know, we will see where this, I, I think where, where this ordinance will go and what, you know, what, what will come out of it. I do think it's in the best interest of, of our city. I think Councilmember Taylor very succinctly summed up what this is doing. We're going from a current ordinance that is unenforceable and out of compliance with Boise to one that we believe is in compliance with Boise. And so I, and just to backtrack again, you know, we have tried, we have, we've left Lumsen Park open. We've had our public property destroyed. We had, I know at Mosquito, we've also left that bathroom open before and it was destroyed with needles, with feces strewn across the walls. So it's, we've, we've tried to allow for public property to be used by our homeless. And unfortunate part is that it gets destroyed. And so I, and I think anyone that has a private property, you, you know, you would experience the same thing. You wouldn't want the same thing happening in your own home or your own business. And we're trying to protect those public assets for the entire city. And so I will be supporting this ordinance, but I wanted to make those comments. And so I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could make a couple of comments?
Absolutely.
Thank you. First of all, I, this-
First of all, this is an extremely difficult topic. It always has been, and it always will be, falling to a group of five people and staff to try and solve a, a world, a world problem. It isn't a Placerville problem, or a state, or even a national. I want to thank all the speakers this evening. Having been through a number of these meetings, I heard some very honest comments this evening. I believe it was the first time I've ever heard anybody even say it was a national problem. People have always come before us and focused on it being a Placerville problem, and, and unto that, I would say it's a global problem. There, there is not a part of this globe that does not have a homeless, homeless issue. So, therefore, it falls to society. We are a small city government that are incapable of taking on that kind of a task. So, as Councilmember Taylor so eloquently stated, we're going to make a modest attempt to address what we need to do to protect the property that we're charged with protecting by the voters that elected us. And that's making sure that the parks and the trails and the walkways, et cetera, et cetera, are not destroyed by these individuals that choose to live outside of facilities. I appreciate the comments about the Catholic Church. Mr. Smith, that was I that brought that up. I will for always be insulted that the no trespassing signs that have been on that huge hall sits there locked this evening. Someone was concerned about the coming rain. I suggest you go up to Sacramento Street and talk to the priest and get him to unlock that building tomorrow night if you're that truly concerned. I'll bet you it'll remain locked. That's a billion-dollar corporation in the state of California, multi-billion-dollar global corporation. That's their answer to the question that you're asking us to solve this evening. It was interesting, and I appreciate, again, the honesty. We ask those folks that they must behave properly in public, and if they cannot, they have to leave. Now, that's okay to say that, if you're a nomadic shelter, but if we ask you to not defecate and urinate and use drugs along a public trail, we are violating your constitutional law, and we are, we are discriminating against that person. So, I appreciate that. It goes back to, I believe, Mr., might have been Mr. Clarici, said that gradually, as this nomadic shelter has, in its history, the participation sadly, because of the nature of behavioral problems that these individuals have, these beautiful church buildings sit locked because congregations, not city councils, but congregations, have decided not to participate. So, it falls back to us, again, as being a part of a bigger community, we can only do a small portion. And again, I think we have to keep making steps. One of the things about Hangtown Haven, and it was a beautiful success, it sadly, word got out. And it's, I'll equate it, and I've used this analogy before, to the old hobo network. People know where to go to get stuff, and where towns are nice, and where towns are not nice. There are massive communication networks for anything. Word got out that Hangtown Haven was very nice. Word then got out that Hangtown Haven had a bunch of rules. And there's a huge percentage, whether we like to admit it or not, of these homeless individuals that do not like rules, will not give up drugs, will not give up alcohol, will not give up sex, they will not give up their, their violent behavior. So, as those individuals came to Placerville, found out Hangtown Haven had rules, they just stayed, and they lived around Hangtown Haven. It took us over three years to eventually reduce the homeless population that came here from all over California because Hangtown Haven was successful. Sadly, inside the camp, it worked great. There was a number of beautiful success stories. The community members all came forward, and everybody did their small part to help those individuals succeed, whether it was with mental health issues, alcohol, and substance abuse, et cetera, et cetera. But the reality was, just like the person that doesn't behave nice in public and has to leave, the camp was surrounded, their, the town was filled with individuals that came and didn't fit in and stayed. So, we have to be very, very careful until we are able to globally address this, to prevent that from happening again. And it's a shame, because it really was a beautiful success story. But those individuals were there. So, with that, I believe the action requested this evening is to waive the second reading and to introduce the ordinance?
Adopt.
Adopt the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. So, Mr. Mayor, that would be my motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a second. And I think I'll, I'll call roll call on this one.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you. There are no public hearings, item 11. So, let me ask Council real fast, before we move on to item 12, discussion and action items. Do you want to take a quick break here? As we'll do a quick, another 10-minute break. Thank you, everybody. How you feeling, Mark? You sound better. Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. We're going to move on to items, to items 12, discussion and action items, item 12.1, authorize staff to delay the release of the fiscal year 2019-2020 downtown business surtaxes to the blast, to the Placerville Downtown Association and direct staff on how to proceed. And I believe Mr. Morris has this report.
Just, excuse me for just a second.
Yes.
Mayor Acuna, I am going, Mayor Acuna, sorry about that, what a slip. Mayor Saragosa, I am going to have to, I'm going to recuse myself from this, as I am a member of PDA, and I could be beneficiary, beneficiary of those funds going to that in some form or another. So, I'm going to step out for a moment while you guys-
All right, we will, we will wait for Vice Mayor to go into the back room. Okay. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Excuse me, thank you, Mayor and Council. I will make this quick. For the past many years, and I went back, did some research trying to find out how far back, the city has awarded a grant which consists of the business licens surtax that is charged to downtown businesses within the parking district. They have granted those funds back to the, basically, the businesses through the Downtown Association. The amount comes to approximately 11, $11,000 to $12,000 each year. We have done that for a long time. We've found some resolutions and information related to it, but nothing firm that said how that was to be done, or when it was to be done, et cetera. Normally, that is done in approximately November of each year. This year, staff attends a lot of the PDA board meetings, and there was some change in leadership over the last three months that just concerned us what direction they were going, if they were properly accounting for the funds, and et cetera. I'm not saying they weren't, but just raised some questions. For those reasons, we held off in, in November distributing the funding, and we still have held off, and some issues came up again. In January, at the last board, board meeting, again, some change in leadership that raised a concern for us. And therefore, we wanted to get direction from the city council on how they would like us to, what they would like us to do with those funds. Do you want us to go ahead and distribute them to the PDA, or do you want us to use those in another way? And I've listed some ways that that could be. Other ways of promoting the downtown, there is a resolution, we've found, that talks about they can be used for promotion or for fixtures in the downtown area, all of which would help promote the downtown area. So, that, that's what the funding could be used for. We, we, there, there's several options of how that could be done, either internally, which I probably don't recommend, but perhaps contracting with another agency or a private firm to do some promotional activities for downtown. So, we can look at all of those as, as options. One thing I want to mention, based on the letter that was provided to us tonight, and I've given you a copy that was read earlier in the meeting by, by Brian Chase, the current president of the PDA. I was approached by Heidi Meyerhofer, who's in the audience, at the break, to state that basically, they are saying that they are not interested in receiving those funds, and, and hopefully, I'm saying this right, Heidi, but not interested in being part of the conversation in terms of where those funds go to, they're not interested in those.
Say, say that, make it clear.
They're not interested in receiving the funds at this time.
Okay, so they're agreeing with-
The Downtown Association.
Okay.
Yeah. So, however, Heidi did mention that there are some things that they've done with those, with those funds in the past, that she would like to relate to us. And I invited her, eventually, maybe she can be our first speaker on behalf of PDA, to talk about that a little bit, in that realm. But before I do so, I wanted to be able to answer any questions that the council may have, and if there are questions, that we can, can discuss at this time. So, I'll send it back to you.
Thank you, Cleve. We have questions for now.
I, I don't have any right now, but I think I will later on, after we hear the story.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and then open up the public comment period for this item. And Heidi, if you want to make comments first, I'm also going to waive the, the time limit on this one as well.
To how long?
10 minutes.
Is it that long?
Thank you.
This on?
Yep.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As it was mentioned earlier tonight, the PDA is removing itself from contention for these funds, and, for, for reasons stated earlier. We would like to say that in light of the absence of these funds, the PDA will no longer be able to do a couple of things that we have traditionally done. And I don't know if you know that the PDA spends your $11,000 on marketing and promotion of the downtown. I provided an accounting of how we spent money this year for promotion and marketing of downtown, and the total spent was $32,000. The difference is paid for by the fundraising activities that the PDA does on Main Street, and by donations made by the individual merchants. For instance, we just gave $2,000 to the city to use for the lights that were put over the street. That $2,000 was, was collected over many years by merchant contributions. We also turned over $5,000 to the city from a grant that we received from the county. So, the city received $7,000 from the PDA just last month for the purposes of the Festival of Lights and decorating downtown. With the absence of this money that we are no longer willing to receive, we will not be able to provide a Festival of Lights experience. It usually costs the downtown about $7,000. This year, we're estimating, because of some of the additions made, the PDA spent in the neighborhood of $10,000 just for the Festival of Lights and decorating downtown. We will no longer be able to provide that service. So, there's a $10,000 gap that will need to be considered if you wish to have downtown decorated. We regret that we will not be able to do this, but we will not. The other service that we provided that will not continue will be the flower basket program. We raise about $6,000 annually to put the flower baskets on Main Street and to maintain them with the help of more employees. So, that will no longer be able to be done by the PDA in the absence of these funds, and the absence of our major fundraising efforts. We will no longer be requesting street closures for events, and we will no longer be doing our large events on Main Street. The PDA hopes to focus, with its limited resources, on marketing and promotion of merchant businesses on Main Street. It will be a much more manageable task, and a much more affordable one, given our limited resources. That is our current position, and therefore, we request that the conversation you have tonight about these funds not involve the PDA. Thanks.
Thank you, Heidi. And continue with public comments.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Meader. My family has owned and operated the Placerville News Company at the Bell Tower since 1912. We've been involved in the PDA since its beginning, about 36, 37 years ago. It's done some wonderful things for downtown, for sure, and it's, it's definitely a viable something that needs to be continued. Unfortunately, in this last year, my role was treasurer, and under Tim Taylor's presidency, we went from a model where we were going to represent everybody on the downtown to, he wanted to take it in a position where he was, he was worried about IRS compliance. So, basically, under that, everybody's memberships were canceled, and only a very small number of merchants are now being represented. So, the PDA has gone from being something that's great and grand to take care of downtown to just focusing on a very small few, which is sad. And you guys have supported the downtown, the, the PDA, for quite some time with the grant. And unfortunately, at this point, I don't think it should be granted to the PDA, but I would just hope that in the future, we can leave that window open to rebirth, create something new that will take care of the downtown merchants, will take care of Christmas decorations, and is something that can, you know, promote the greater good for all of us for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Andrew Von Der Schmitt? I'm not going to talk about PDA, they don't want to be part of the conversation, and that's totally fine. There's 11 grand on the table that did go to an organization that promoted the entire downtown area. That money can go into the things that they're threatening to take away if they don't have that money. Literally, Festival of Lights went on with or without PDA this year. Yes, we did grant that money to the city to pay for the improvements, but that committee was peopled by community members. Not a single board member was on that committee, and it was still an awesome festival. I would advocate that the city hold on to that money and put it to good use. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I like that circuitous route.
Well, you have to come down the middle. It's a-
You look like a model, isn't it?
It's for dramatic effect, it gets on the T anyway. Hi, I'm John again. You know, it's unfortunate what's happened to the PDA. I actually went to PDA meetings for four years, and I hit almost every one of them. And it's an interesting group, and by and large, they do good stuff. I cannot speak to what's happened last year because I only hear about it, I haven't gone to a meeting since I've been sitting up there. The Festival of Lights was an interesting thing, because I had tried to work, and Heidi had tried to work, on getting some things done prior to that, and for whatever reason, it didn't happen. What I discovered is, is that when you, when the time, I guess, when the time is ripe, and you get with the right people, things happen. My gut tells me that there will be plenty of money to do the Festival of Lights, because the Festival of Lights is the, one of the handful of things that happens on Main Street that people really like. You know, you don't get too many people that get upset about lighting a Christmas tree and seeing lights on Main Street. I can guarantee you, there are people that get pissed off when they have to go downtown, and they find out that there's a craft fair going on that they've never been to and they don't care about. Now, that doesn't mean the craft fairs are bad, I'm just saying, it's one of those kinds of things. The merchants were all over the place when it came to road closures, so the idea that there won't be asking for road closures is not probably going to keep anybody up at night. In fact, it helps, because I understand you folks are actually looking at road closures on Main Street, so this might actually help you with that decision, especially if the PDA isn't going to come in and ask for any road closures. Some of the things could be moved to the fairgrounds, which has open space and lots of facilities, and would do probably just as well there. If I get a couple of contracts that I'm trying to go after now, I will commit to making up the difference, or most of it, for the Festival of Lights. Up to a certain amount of money, because if it starts getting real crazy, I don't have that much money.
What are we talking about here?
All right, we like John.
Many thousands, thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars. I'll help out, because what I think, the experience I had working with Rebecca and some other folks, Ryan and Matt and all that, and Dennis, who's- folks, Ryan and Matt and all that and Dennis, who's in the cone of silence. I discovered that you can actually get a lot of things done on Main Street if you focus on it and you get the right people in place. So. I don't really know now because they broke up with you before you could break up with them, so the idea, I don't even know. It's kind of like, okay, don't give them the money because they don't want it apparently. And the $5,000 grant, because I used to write one thing about that $5,000 grant. It came from Brian Veer Camp, okay? Let's be clear about that. It was given to the PDA to do something and from the very get-go, it was earmarked to be doing something about doing something nice at the holidays, at Christmas, on Main Street. So this idea that, well, we generously gave $5,000 to whomever to make this project happen, well, that money was supposed to do that. So the money went to do the thing it was supposed to do and that $2,000 was people putting nickels in a candy jar apparently, over years, for that very purpose. So it wasn't like they took a bunch of money that they were gonna go buy gargoyles and stick them on some building somewhere. They actually took the money and used it for what it was supposed to be used for. So let's just kind of repair that bit of history there. That actually happened that way. Because I was in the car with Brian Veer Camp talking about this very thing and this grant. So I have a little bit of firsthand knowledge about how that money got to where it was supposed to be and why. Heidi did a great job, by the way, when she ran that thing because that is the worst job of herding cats on the planet. And so it's a tough job and the fact that she did it for a year plus or two years, I don't know what it was, kudos to her. Okay, anyway, thank you.
Thank you John.
Hi, I'm Mary Meter. I'm owner of the Placerville News Company. I also have been involved in PDA, not since the beginning, but darn near. I've held almost every office and I want to thank you all for all the generosity that you have given us all these years. I personally don't want to lose it, but I don't think at this point we deserve it. We have fallen apart. We have, we don't even have officers. We have self-appointed officers at this point. So I, we're a very divided group, but I really want to thank you for all your support and we'd like to ask for it again when we get built back up and I'm sure we will. It's gonna take us some time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville and one of those people who hates all those downtown closures all the time for all kinds of things that just make it hard to get anywhere, anytime. So I'm really happy. They don't want the money, fine, we can use it to do our own Festival of Lights. And as far as downtown closures, I am really glad they're gonna stop that because I've stood here on several occasions, you have heard me say, we need to put an end to those. Those are creating horrible hazardous traffic conditions on both sides of Main Street where people are trying to find their way around. So no more closures on Main Street? I've always said there was only about four we needed in the first place. One was the Festival of Lights. One was the Christmas Parade. One is the wagon train and one is trick or treat on Main Street. Other than that, all the rest of them are superfluous and could go to the fairgrounds or not even have them, it wouldn't matter. And some of the merchants on Main Street that I've talked to would be perfectly happy to do without closures on Main Street because it means they get less business on those days and the only thing people come into their stores for is to ask if they can use the restroom. So, kadoos, I'm glad.
Thank you Sue.
Good evening Kirk Smith. When I raise ethics questions, it's always, the response is either aggravating or amusing or a combination of both. But I'm wondering, when Dennis Thomas leaves, because it's a conflict of interest, what was it when he was here on three different occasions to address the same subject? One, to criticize Tim Taylor, his, the one who succeeded him. Was he acting, when he did that, on behalf of himself and his business interest downtown? Or was it on behalf of the PDA? Which is it? So if it's a conflict of interest tonight, why wasn't it then? And then when I raise conflict of interest regarding some property that has really great parking privileges downtown, I'm told that that goes back long ago when the Robinsons had it. I don't really care if it goes back to the days of the horse and buggy. The idea is that when you're chair of that committee, you have a chance to keep those privileges. Again, your rule is to avoid the appearance of impropriety. What is it like when you have somebody who goes around telling people, undercutting the people who are in elected office? Telling them, stay away from Tim Taylor, it's toxic. I mean, that happened all the time. Or bring in people who've never been a part of PDA before and have that kind of conflict going on. So when someone says they're not gonna take the money, I'm not happy with them or the way the city handled it because you should, in a business-like way, communicate more effectively. You had so many strings on that money, I mean, and the communication really is bad. For years, you had people on the Economic Advisory Committee and I never heard any of them make reports to the PDA about matters that affect us. I hear on a recent meeting that Cleve had said, there's gonna be no more street closures. I don't know what that's all about, but we who show up there month after month, I don't know these things. Isn't that what communication's about? And then the city council agenda, I don't know who you send it to, but when matters affect us, we don't always, you wonder why? There were only two people who had showed up at the Planning Commission on the historic district downtown, that issue about whether you should keep that around? Who knew about it? I've asked business people, nobody knew about it. So the ways to reach out to people should be more effective. It should be done in a more business-like way. I think you ought to skip this issue and come back another time, but stop this business of having the city involved in politicizing that organization, which is exactly what happened. Those meetings were horrible. You have somebody sending out letters in an official capacity to, who's now the president, telling him he was childish and things like that. That's not business-like. That's not the way to operate. And I don't think you should endorse that practice by hanging the money over somebody. If they want to use it, use it. And those, ask the business community, do a survey. There's nothing stopping you. Go around to every 10th business on Main Street and ask them what they think about the various closures. We've done that in the past and partly it's because John Carecich had suggested it, so we went out and asked and they found, as I wrap it up, that they found various, whatever helped them one time, it helped somebody else the next time. But you're not gonna have it down to the fairgrounds because how's that gonna stimulate downtown business? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you Kirk. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment, bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question and it might involve bringing a member of the public back up to speak. Jeff Meter, who was the former treasurer of PDA last year, mentioned that Tim Taylor had refocused, canceled all the memberships and refocused who could belong. I'd like to get, if it's all right with you, to get some more information on that.
Sure.
And also maybe find out about the mass resignation that took place at a recent PDA meeting. I'd be curious as to, what is the current business definition that is allowed to be a member of PDA? Jeff, if you could help us?
Sorry, is that on?
Yep, go ahead, it's on.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, so yes, under Tim's presidency, every merchant, everyone who was previously, excuse me, so back it up a little bit, the previous, the Articles of Incorporation state that we are to promote business, everybody in the district, okay? So Tim wanted to be IRS compliant and so he said to do that, he said every member needs to have a positive affirmation of membership. So we started with a membership application. It's very hard to get the businesses to come together and people to sign up and that kind of stuff and so it was, it was gonna be an ongoing process. Unfortunately, about the same time we started that process, Tim and Heidi and Brian decided that they were going to go against the Sour Dough &amp; Co. So that whole thing erupted and that was kind of in the PDA's lap, so when I went around to talk to people about becoming members of the PDA, they're like, yeah, you know, that's an anti-business group, we don't want anything to do with that. So it was really a hard sell. So we only had a few, maybe 25 people sign up last year. The idea was to continue this process to get people to sign up and to build a membership list. I just recently found out that Tony from Bonkers, he filled out the 2019 membership, he did not fill out the 2020 membership, so he was informed by Brian Chase that he was no longer a member. So how you become and stay a member of the PDA is a bit of a slippery slope at this point. It's something that we need to, hopefully, when we can establish who is actually a member, the members could come together, ideally elect a board, elect officers to run it. At this point, everybody quit because there was so much fighting last year, back and forth. First it was about the RFP with the ketchup and mustard, was something that Tim Taylor brought in. It was a big fight.
Would you say that again?
One of the first fights that happened last year with the board was with the ketchup and mustard building with the RFPs. That is something that Tim Taylor pushed and it divided the board a little bit. Then it became the Sour Dough &amp; Co. and that was another dividing factor in the board. And all along with the whole membership applications and kicking people out and who could be in, who can't be in, it created a lot of strife and a lot of fighting and so we spent an entire year fighting over these things rather than doing what we needed to be doing, which was promoting the downtown. Mark, do you have any other?
Thank you very much for that information.
Absolutely, thank you. And I'll let Heidi, if you want to come back up, address any other.
I have a little bit different explanation. The PDA began last year researching what a 501(c)(6) actually is and it's very different from a nonprofit that everybody has come to know as a 501(c)(3). There were a lot of assumptions made about our nonprofit that were not accurate. There was also a lot of assumptions made about our membership. For years, we were told that our members consisted of those who paid the surtax that the city assessed and the city collected. Those were not, in fact, our members. We sought legal attorney advice and we were, it was clear that paying that surtax did not equate to membership. The PDA is a private, nonprofit, 501(c)(6) corporation under the California Corporations Code. We've done a lot of research on this. It is an opt-in membership. One of the challenges and one of the things that got us looking into what the problem was, was we never knew who our members were or could accurately identify their contact information. The city collects the fees. We're not told who pays the fees, we're just the recipient of a grant. But for many years, the two were conflated. This year, it was cleared up for us that membership is by application. Just like membership in the El Dorado Winery Association or the Apple Hill Growers Association or the Chamber of Commerce, all 501(c)(6) corporations that have annual membership applications and dues. In August of last year, we sent out our first membership application explaining what we had learned. We gave a summary from our attorney with the application and we delivered it through the email list that we had compiled over many, many hours of trying to find out. My daughter and I walked the street to each business and asked for their phone and their email information so that we could contact them. That's not how a member organization should have to do it. Once we learned that we could identify our members through application, that eliminated that problem of not being able to contact them. They were providing us on an annual basis, up-to-date information. We weren't charging a membership fee because we admitted that we, we did not have a value to show them. There had been so much dysfunction over many years that we could not ask them for money because we had not proven our value. We simply asked that they join, that they give us their information and allow us to then prove our, our value to them. They, those applications were, they were told in August that they would expire at the end of the year and they would be given a new application in January, which they were. And the case that Jeff is stating about Tony at TW Bonkers, he was actually given at the end of December, Brian went into his business and gave him the application, they had a conversation about it and Tony said, oh, this is a really busy time of year, thank you, I'll get to this. And he did not resubmit it. We notified all of our members that we had on file that had filled out the 2020 application of the meeting. And I'm sorry that Tony was not part of that. I think I've made the point that a private, nonprofit, 501(c)(6) corporation has the right and obligation to determine its own members and then advocate for them as needed. Thank you.
Mayor, I know I was up-
No, we're, that was just clarification from Heidi, but we're not taking any further-
This is one minute because Jeff was brought up twice.
No, we've specifically called him up by a member, so no more public comments, sorry Kirk. Okay, so I think we're, it's back at council, correct? No, public comments closed, sorry.
I wanted to give you the answers before we took it out. All right.
Thank you both for those clarifying comments. So it's back to, so any further comments, wishes? What does the council's desire on this issue at this point?
Can I ask you quickly, because I think Dave Warren has always been kind of the keeper of this, this fund. Dave, if the information that you've heard this evening, is there anything in addition that you would add that would be beneficial to council or the public to understand why we collected the money or what our expectations were or what your department's expectations were when you collected that fund?
Thank you, councilmember Rakuna and council. I think the staff report and the comments that were made covered the item. One comment I would like to make is that in the recent past, actually over the many years, the PDA has asked for a list of businesses that lie within the parking district, which is the area that we assess the business surtax. And as recently as last year, that list was provided. The city does not determine who's in the PDA, however, we do maintain the list of those businesses that we have to levy the surtax. And so there was a comment made earlier that the city doesn't know who's in the PDA. Well, the city doesn't determine who's in the PDA, but we know which businesses are within the parking district, which traditionally has been the footprint for the PDA. So just a point of clarification.
That's a good point because you're just, you're reminding us that there's a, you have identified a method to whom you collect the surcharge, doesn't determine membership, it just determines the need to collect or not collect the surcharge.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have more later, but go ahead.
The other comments?
I just think it's, it's too bad that it's come to this, but I'm gonna hang my hat on what Mary Meter said, is that they're probably gonna need some time to reestablish and I can't see that they're not going to make that happen. It's really important what you do and you represent a lot of the businesses and a lot of the things that it's been mentioned tonight of the things that's been done with that money. And it certainly is part of downtown, or what I consider downtown Placerville. And I think we ought to adhere to what they're saying. They don't want the money, so I don't see, you know, we're not going to force it on them. That's for darn sure. And Cleve mentioned that we can distribute the funds. I'll tell you what I'm thinking about are the flower baskets. And can we take on a project like that? I mean, I know. But more workshop does, you know, contribute to that. Maybe they would take it on as a project. I don't know. And I don't know if that can be done, but if we give them the money, I just, so give me, you know, that's an example.
I think that I would be interested in sitting down with PDA and I think they would be willing to do that and talk about those projects that are not going to happen. And we can talk about that and come back with a, you know, recommendation to council of how we might can, what you may or may want to do with different projects. So I don't want to commit to that. I want to see exactly what it's.
I'm not asking for commitment, but I just want to know what can be done. I mean, if we make this decision not to give them the money, the money is going to be there. And do we have the authority then to distribute it?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And you could distribute it for that.
For the good of downtown, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. You know, I know that in the past, there's been programs to raise funding specifically for the flower baskets, too. So I would like to explore those options, too. And not to say that we wouldn't put money into it. A big cost, if I recall and talking to Heidi and others in the past, is that cost of the ongoing watering that they do tomorrow. So that's something that we would have to look closely at and see what that cost is. And, you know, we can make some recommendations to you on how that might work.
I've got some other thoughts of maybe where we could get people to volunteer. I think it could be done, so. But I just wanted to be sure that we have the authority and, you know, anything that would enhance downtown, that we could use it for that.
I believe so, yes, from what I've read.
Can I weigh in on that?
Yes.
Because there's two restrictions on the use of this money. First one is in the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of 1965, which has about six or seven different bases that you can spend the money on. And I'll just list them real quickly. Basically, it's the acquisition, construction, or maintenance of parking facilities, decoration of any public place in the area, promotion of public events which take place on public places or in the area, furnishing of music in any public place in the area, and the general promotion of retail trade in the area. Our ordinance is more restrictive than that. The ordinance, which actually identifies where that money's going to go, provides only two of all of those that I mentioned. Now, the last one's pretty much a catch-all and arguably, it could include some of the ones that would be not included. But it's for the construction, acquisition, and maintenance of parking facilities. So you can use it on the parking structure, for example. Or the general promotion of business activities in the area. Now, that could be advertising decorations. People like to go to a place that looks nice. You could argue that that promotes business within the area. So I'm not sure that it excludes those. It's just more general in nature.
Thank you. Kara, any comments?
I've got a couple of comments. First, thank you, Heidi, for your comments and clarifications. I think downtown associations are really important. When I owned a business on Main Street, I really enjoyed the Placerville Downtown Association. Think they did great work. I am actually somewhat encouraged to hear that they're going to focus on marketing and less so on events and things like that. I just hope that they continue to be inclusive of all the businesses that are downtown. But I think in terms of this funding, if they don't want the funding, then that makes the decision easier on our part. And I would, might, you know, in terms of to direct staff and how to proceed, I would like, you know, some kind of itemized ideas on like flower baskets and.
Suggestions where we should.
What's that? Yeah, some suggestions of possibilities and numbers that we can kind of look at for that.
Well, and I know we've discussed, I mean, this has come up in the past and we've talked about, you know, what's the highest and best use of these funds and how we spend them and who spends them. I mean, since we're sort of back to tabula rasa here, you know, where we're at, let's let staff come back with us, as Kara mentioned, with some suggestions. And that could also mean, you know, mechanisms to how that money is spent. So whether that's some successor agency to PDA, whether that's somebody else in town or another nonprofit. You know, let's look at those options and then let's look at what we can do as a city with some of these individual programs as well if we end up spending the money ourselves. You know, it looks like we do have, we have some latitude there from what Mr. Driscoll said, as long as we spend it on those specific items. And, you know, kind of have that discussion. Because I think it's kind of premature now to figure out what we're going to do after we've.
No, I was, the only reason I brought up the flower, because I just wanted to, for instance.
Oh, I totally agree.
Okay.
Completely agree.
Because I didn't, okay.
But at least this way would give us a chance to really look at some options and, you know, see what, see how we can spend these dollars. Know what the rest of the council thinks on that.
Or not spend them.
Yeah, right now, we're not spending them, or we're not using them, but.
Let me, if I might make a few comments. First of all, let me thank Heidi and Jeff and the others that spoke this evening, took the time to stay later in this evening to make sure that they could be heard on this. I really do appreciate the clarifications that everybody's comments has provided and the follow-up information that Jeff and Heidi provided was very useful and gives me a much better idea of the issues that PDA has been dealing with. Having a little familiarity with, you know, the Goldbug Park Development Committee and its status and the importance of it properly accounting itself so that it stays in compliance with its nonprofit status. It sounds like the 501(c)(6). Of course, it has a lot of important criteria. Appreciate Mr. Warren clarifying for me again this evening that we are collecting an excise fee or surcharge that's specifically directed by ordinance to be used to promote downtown. It doesn't say that it goes to PDA. It just always has. Okay, and that's very clear. So we will continue to collect that surcharge. And then, as I think my colleagues are indicating, we'll go ahead and decide where the biggest and best use of that fee will be in the future. You know, I had heard the various stories. And again, I appreciate the speakers filling us in as far as the mass resignation that recently took place. I think we've found out that there are two self-appointed officers right now for the PDA. Mr. Driscoll, regarding any 501(c)(6), the appointment of officers, how does that work?
You know, I would want to research that. Normally, officers are elected by the directors or appointed by the directors or by the membership. It depends on what the bylaws say. So you have to look at the actual bylaws to see.
By the, so it is by the bylaws. And I appreciate, thank you, Heidi. This is, I'm sorry, pardon me, Mr. Mayor. So the existing PDA bylaws, clearly identified. I have to say, it would look pretty strange if there were two of us up here spending all the city money and three members were missing. So I have to say that would the city want to be giving PDA the funds this next go-around with the turmoil that they are in? No. It's unfortunate that the situation has kind of gotten to where it's at. The loss of the flower baskets, the big events. And it's, was it you said that? Somebody said that they dumped us before we dumped them, kind of a situation. I do appreciate the merchants downtown that have been downtown forever and ever and their willingness to see this storm through and see what comes out at the other end and not lose all the wonderful things that have happened down there. And it's, if there was an attempt to, for threat or concern as far as the road closures go, if anything, a lot of those are putting the town at risk because of the Tahoe regional traffic, which is the impacts from Highway 50 that's dysfunctional every, almost every day now westbound. All of that spills in. Jennifer Chapman's in the front row, big Clay Street advocate. Big concern over Clay Street and Coleman Street serving as a substitute for Highway 50. That's insane. You throw a road closure on that on Main Street? It's like, what were these people thinking? And sadly, you know, our own popularity is, Sue Rodman has mentioned the fairgrounds. And that's really where some of these events belong. But there's a whole nother board out there. And the rates that they charge for the quality of the property that they can present don't pencil out for most promoters. So that's really sad. Because we could still have Main Street full of restaurants with people coming and going to events that were at the fairground. Wouldn't that be cool? And sadly, over the year, last year, you know, I heard so many equal pros and cons from various business owners on Main Street. "Mark, don't ever let them close the street again." "Mark, make them close the street again." How do you win? It sounds like Heidi is, you know, Heidi and this whole thing has run into that same issue of herding cats. On any given event, on any given month, you'll get an equal weight of support and opposition and everybody has their legitimate, and they are legitimate concerns. So it's a shame that it has come to this. And I hope that we can see stability come back down to Main Street. And I'll go ahead, do we need a motion on this or are we giving staff direction?
We're authorizing staff to delay the release, so.
Do you want to delay and then sit down with?
And come back with options, I think that's.
Well, either delay or based on what you've heard tonight, if you want to direct us to not distribute that grant to PDA this current year, could be revisited in the future. But then to come back with ideas for how the money could be distributed.
And that would be my motion to go ahead and not to distribute it this year and for staff to work with any Main Street merchant or association for future events and future promotional ideas on Main Street.
I'll second that.
Oh, no, we need a roll call. So we'll do a roll call.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Akuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
That motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Can we go get our vice mayor that's in the cone of silence, as Mr. Clarici said? Did you say it? I don't know. Someone said it.
Cone of silence.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item 12.2. Adopt a resolution, receive and file a traffic and speed survey data for Clay Street for 2018 and 19, and provide direction to staff on how to address public concern regarding Clay Street traffic calming. And I believe that's Ms. Neves.
Good evening, Mayor Saragosa, Vice Mayor Thomas, and councilmembers. The item before you is a follow-up to the verbal report that was provided to council and the public on December 10th at the previous council meeting. As you're aware, the subject of speeding and traffic congestion on Clay Street has been brought forward in public comment. And at the request of the council, this item is brought forward under verbal update as well as written update this evening. The issue of speeding and traffic congestion has now been expressed by the public for many years. Concerns have been raised that Clay Street has become an alternate Highway 50 when congestion and traffic volumes exceed Highway 50's capacity compounded by the existing signals located at Canal Spring and Bedford. Community concerns are that Highway 50 traffic is bypassing the traffic signals by utilizing Clay Street, causing congestion on this local road. Concerns have also been raised that vehicles taking Clay Street as an alternate Highway 50 are doing so under excess speed above the posted 25 mile an hour speed limit. When discussing traffic movement, it's important to understand that traffic congestion and speeding are inversely proportionate to one another. The greater the congestion, the slower the traffic. If you have congestion, you likely don't have speeding. If there's speeding, cars are obviously moving, so there's no congestion. To better understand the concerns and observe real-time data related to traffic behavior on Clay Street, the City of Placerville Police Department posted a speed trailer. December's verbal report highlighted the data collected from 2019. However, the report before you this evening also includes the 2018 data, providing two years of representative data for traffic pattern and behavior on Clay Street. The 2018 data was collected Memorial Day weekend, a historically busy recreational weekend along the Highway 50 corridor. The 2019 data was collected during the peak of Apple Hill season. A table is provided in staff's report that summarizes the data from both years as a side-by-side comparison. Both collected at what is considered peak recreational time periods for the region. For the traffic volume on Clay Street, before we directly discuss the traffic volume, it's important to note that in California, roads are designed to two sets of standards. The California Highway Design Manual, or the HDM, and the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials Highway Safety Manual, or better known as ASHTO. Both standards address capacity and traffic speed design for urban and rural local roads as the most conservative approach for the design today. Of the two standards, the HDM is actually the most conservative. Based on all available standards, a two-lane rural road has the available capacity to handle traffic volume in a range between 8,300 up to 23,125 vehicles for average daily traffic. Clay Street is a collector's street by definition due to its function as a two-lane collecting road that terminates at both Mosquito and Main Street, which are two arterial roads. Given this function, Clay Street is designed to handle a minimum of 8,300 vehicles per day per this function. To better understand how much traffic a two-lane road can comfortably handle just through a comparison of other two-lane roads that are commonly traveled in the community, Green Valley Road handles about 20,000 cars a day. Main Street, a two-lane road, handles just over about 10,000 cars a day. In 2018, during a peak holiday weekend, Clay Street experienced an average daily traffic of 458 vehicles per day. In 2019, Clay Street weekday traffic averaged 579 vehicles per day. And weekends experienced an average of 1127 vehicles per day in 2019. Traffic volume amounts recorded for 2018 and 19 both fall well below even the lowest threshold of design capacity for a two-lane road of 8,300 cars per day. In fact, the total number of vehicles for six days of data collection in 2018 and 13 days in 2019 is still within the acceptable one-day volume range. And that's a collective amount of vehicles over that entire timeframe. Still fits within that range. At its peak volume, Clay Street is experiencing only 13.6% of the lowest available design capacity on weekends and 7% on weekdays. Even with volume doubling on the weekends, which is discussed further in a moment, it is important to note that the amount of cars recorded on Clay Street is well below the road's design capacity and ability to convey vehicles. Therefore, the recorded field data indicates that traffic volume and congestion are not an issue on Clay Street. Traffic speed on Clay Street. Concerns regarding vehicle speed have also been raised by the public, prompting staff to evaluate the travel speed on traffic on Clay Street as well. Vehicle speed was recorded by the police department trailer for both the 2018 and 2019 timeframes and data collection, as previously mentioned. The trailer recorded both average speed and 85th percentile speed. It's important to note that the posted speed on Clay Street is 25 miles an hour. The recorded average speed was 19.29 miles per hour and 21.31 miles per hour for 2018 and 2019 respectively. The 85th percentile speed in 2018 was 24.42 miles per hour. While in 2019, it was 24.19 miles per hour and on the weekday, and 24.4 miles per hour on the weekend. miles per hour, and on the weekday, and 24.4 miles per hour on the weekend, showing a slight increase in weekend speeds on Clay Street between 2018 and 2019. However, it's important to note that this is the 85th percentile speed, and what this means is that 85% of the vehicles, the vast majority traveling on Clay Street, are doing so under the posted speed limit at 25 miles per hour. This recorded field data indicates speeding is not an issue on Clay Street. Traffic calming manual and implementation. The city has been working on a traffic calming manual that provides additional options to reduce speed on local roads and streets within the community. One of the important factors considered in the manual is the establishment of thresholds to determine whether or not a problem actually exists and whether or not traffic calming measures should be implemented. The chart provided in staff's reports shows how the need for a project is determined. The requirement to consider a project of implementing traffic calming measures is a minimum of 51 points. Clay Street at this time would not receive the minimum 51 points. In fact, based on the current data, the maximum points Clay Street could receive would be fif, a total of 15, 10 for discretionary factors and five for sidewalks or pathways. Engineering will continue to develop the traffic calming policy manual as has been requested by council, and will return to council in 2020 for review and direction for implementation throughout the city. Again, city council and staff have heard the requests for traffic calming, but not just on Clay Street, on others as well. However, as it directly relates to Clay Street based on the collected data indicating there is neither a speeding nor a congestion volume issue to address, as well as scoring only 15 out of the necessary 51 points towards eligibility of implementing traffic calming measures, staff is seeking council's direction on how to further proceed with addressing vocalized concerns on Clay Street. On the Highway 50 pilot project I'd mentioned before in December's meeting, city council and staff does listen to the concerns and does recognize that while the volume and speed of traffic are within design capacity and enforcement limitations on Clay Street, there is an impact from Highway 50 related to congestion from recreational traffic. However, the impact for Highway 50 is not just experienced on Clay Street, but throughout the community. Highway 50 congestion impacts Broadway, Main Street, Pacific, Locust, Airport Road, and countless other streets in the city. The city has been working with the Eldorado County Transportation Commission who secured a grant to look at and start the conversation for viable solutions to the congestion through Placerville on Highway 50, specifically as it relates to the impacts of the three signalized intersections at Canal, Spring, and Bedford. Together with Caltrans, the Highway 50 hotspot study is underway and has included public outreach in the form of stakeholder and public meetings. A large community public meeting was held at Town Hall on July 29th and was well-attended and allowed the public to provide direct input on their priorities associated with how Highway 50 functions and its direct impacts to Placerville. It's no surprise that one of the highest priorities in the community was to reduce highway congestion and the resultant congestion on local roads. Improvements to Highway 50 are needed to address the volumes. That requires time and funding. However, to better understand potential impacts, Caltrans, the Transportation Commission, and the city are exploring a trip to Green pilot project. This pilot effort would involve tripping all three signals at Canal, Spring, and Bedford to Green for a four-hour window during peak congestion on one Sunday afternoon, approximately 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, allowing highway traffic to flow uninterrupted through Placerville on Highway 50. On-off movement from the highway would be right in, right out, only at the existing signalized intersections, and local traffic wishing to travel north or south through town would be able to do so on crossings located at Placerville Drive, Ray Lawyer Drive, Mosquito Road, Carson Road, Schnell School Road, Smith Flat Road, and Jakeway, or Point View Drive. The timeline to execute this project is not yet set, but is estimated to take place in 2020. Staff will continue to keep council apprised of progress. This evening's item requests council to receive and file the traffic and speed survey data for Clay Street from 2018 and 2019. I'm pleased to provide direction to staff on how to address public concern regarding Clay Street traffic calming. That concludes staff's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca, for that very detailed report. Council, questions for staff?
I have one question. Um, with the pie chart where it says vehicles slowed, is that how many vehicles slowed down when they saw the speed trailer?
Potentially.
And is that, do we register their speed before they slow down or after?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's my only question.
Any other? No? Okay. I will go ahead and open this up for public.
Oh, thank you.
I've got to get used to.
So Tammy and Ed would have loved to have been here, Judy would have loved to have been here, and the first thing I want to tell you is about the speeding ticket I got from Salisbury, Maryland that I just found out about from Thrifty Rental Car. So these cameras work, they do, they do find the driver, and I did get the administrative fee waived from Thrifty, but I did have to pay my $40 ticket. But I just want to say, you know, there's a lot of kinds of data, there's a lot of places to put the speed trailer, you've got a neighborhood of a lot of observations. We've been asking for years now for who's going to be our liaison. We did meet with Mark Acuna at one point. We had heard possibly Dennis, possibly, Dennis, you told me you thought you were going to be our, you know, our neighborhood, um, point of contact, but I, I really, I just really feel like you need to hear from more people that are living there, what people are seeing and dealing with, you know, in terms of the patterns there. It is, it is not, you know, this any town USA now or any road USA. I, I mean, to compare Clay Street, this little tiny street that has curves and up and down and multifamily housing and transit and goes to a historic district, I mean, to like this miles and miles and miles Green Valley Road. Clay Street isn't a rural road that goes over in hill and dale to Grandma's house. It's not at all comparable. I mean, this is a very different road. I, so, I, I mean, you've spent an enormous amount of time putting together a manual, you know, I, I'm just saying, I'm not, I just, I, I, I just can't help but think that, you know, some of this is, um, you know, it's just, you know, do you want to really comprehensively, you know, study some of these things or just, because, because I, you know, there was a, a speed bump, you know, on Clay Street over there by Coleman. You can still see where it says, and it was apparently a maintenance problem. And again, there's, there's a lot of different ways to have some kind of intervention on what goes on. Judy, Judy was calling, she, Judy had like races, two, two cars in the two lanes. So, I mean, these cars were racing on Clay Street. There's all kinds of things that go on there, and there's many factors and many variables, but again, there's, there's other kinds of data to collect, and I think listening to the people, and it's not just me, you know, we're not going to get all the neighbors out here at 9:30 and 10 o'clock at night. It's really not going to be the way that you're going to hear the firsthand observational data from the people that live there. And there's a lot of people besides me that have stories to tell you about what goes on with the traffic when the traffic trailer isn't there. So I, I just really, I'm not really sure. The point of this, a lot of this seems like it's maybe driven to, um, you know, the, the pending Clay Street Bridge project as well, and we do continue to have concerns about how connecting, you know, widening that bridge and connecting Clay Street with now not one but two arterials, um, there is a change in traffic pattern that will come with that. And, you know, we still don't feel like anybody's acknowledging that making the bridge wider is going to have an effect. Connecting Clay Street with Cedar Ravine, so now you've got it, you know, got, connecting with two sources of thousands and thousands of cars a day, you know, these minor arterials.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
It's, it's a different kind of a pattern. So, you know, we started bringing up these things because of things specific to Clay Street. It's gotten generalized to all the many traffic problems because of the Sacramento area, you know, regional traffic thing that we have. So I'm glad you're working on Highway 50, but I, I, I just hope that you guys will really look at some of the specific things that the neighborhood is trying to address and give us an opportunity to have some kind of, some kind of connection with the city so that you can really hear and see what we're talking about.
Kathy Lishman, um, Placerville resident. Because I live on the north side of town, I'm apt to use that street from time to time. And it was a very poor design. The project was approved originally one way, and then each phase has come back different. The fact that there are so many homes along that street, that the street is wide because they wanted it to be a collector's street, and then there's a lot of homes and they're close to the street. So what they experience is different than, you know, is unique to their neighborhood, I guess I'd have to say. On paper versus what happens in real life can be two different things. So I have sympathy for them. Obviously, there are vehicles that are going too fast, you know, that's a downhill slope that, and I don't know whether it's worse downhill or uphill, where cars tend to go faster, but, um, the lanes are pretty wide, the lane is pretty wide, particularly that one, and I've suggested that, you know, you could put a bike lane on one side of that road. If the road can be made to look smaller, people will perhaps go slower. And I'm really glad to hear that the city is looking at a traffic calming project. That's wonderful. I know this doesn't have anything to do with Highway 50, but I know if that four-hour traffic was closed, would people not get off of 50 to do the businesses in Placerville or they just go through? I don't know why they can't just leave the light on, on longer and the local people just wait a little longer to go across the freeway. Anyway, I think it's the size of the lots, the number of people that live in that area, and the way the street was designed, which was probably not very, designed very well for what the neighborhood became. Thank you.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. I think one of the things that's getting ignored is that Clay Street is not the same Clay Street starting from Mosquito Road as it ends up when it comes down to Main Street. There's a huge shift in the width of the street and how many houses and how close they are to the street. Maybe the, the wider part you could compare to Greenstone Road, I think that was the road that you compared it to, Green Valley? To me, there's no comparison between Clay Street and Green Valley at any point. They, the, the way that it curves around, the way that it changes from, from a fairly wide road coming in from, from Mosquito Road down to a very narrow, almost a one-lane road, and it is one-lane by the time it hits that bridge, doesn't compare to Green Valley, which goes, you can zip along Green Valley all the way from, what?
Rescue.
Rescue, all the way through. You can come off of, uh, the freeway there at Pondros Road and come all the way to Diamond Springs, and you're really basically on Green Valley Road, because that's what it becomes. And it's a much different road than Clay Street. I don't think there's a good comparison there. Maybe the standards on paper may sound the same, but if you look at it on the ground, that's not the same street at all. So I think that there is a problem there in how it's being analyzed, that you're comparing apples and oranges, and maybe not even apples and oranges, maybe you're comparing apples and potatoes. So I think that we need to, to look at Clay Street from a different perspective in that it changes, and I don't think that's, that's not being taken into consideration. And the fact that people don't use just Clay Street when they get blocked off of Highway 50, they go from Clay Street onto some other very small streets and make the problem even worse. So it's, it's the entire neighborhood, not just Clay Street itself. So that's my comments with 21 seconds to go.
Thanks, Sue. Any further public comments on this item? All right. Closing, uh, public comments? Bring it back to council. Wrong button. It's been a long night already.
You'll get it straight.
We're not even through to 12.42 yet. So, L, comments?
I've got some comments. First, I'd like to thank staff. You've clearly put a lot of work into this report and gathering all this data and responding to these concerns. I also don't want to dismiss the concerns of the residents of Clay Street based on this data. I mean, one thing that it showed was that traffic increased about 25% within one year. If you've bought a house in a neighborhood or lived in neighborhoods for a long time and you see that kind of increase, it's going to be alarming and frustrating. But I do agree with the report that is, it is citywide. I am really looking forward to the trip to Green. It would be great if we could see if we can kind of solve this problem at the root cause, which is Highway 50 backing up, um, before we start trying to kind of put Band-Aid fixes on this one street when it's really a citywide problem. I recognize the need for there to be some benchmarks for where we apply these traffic calming measures. Is there, one question I have is, is there anything that residents can do if they don't meet, meet the benchmarks but feel very strongly that they need speed bumps? Is there a way for them to get those speed bumps? Or other measures?
My answer to that would be yes. Council does not have to go by what these standards are, but it's a guideline for you to use to establish those, those measures that you may want to implement. But council has that option to determine that there's some specific circumstance that even though they don't meet the, the benchmarks, that they could still implement a standard.
Thanks, Claire.
And one more question. When will the traffic calming guide that the city's working on be ready?
I'm working on it as fast as I can get to it. I'm working on an IV of coffee as well, but, no, I, we will get it out this year. And also, I kind of want to speak a little bit to design standards within the city, too. We actually have been implementing already traffic calming measures because it, like I mentioned, this is not an uncommon concern from folks in our community. And so, for example, Pacific Street, which, you know, has a similar terrain as you're coming down the hill from Clay Street, you know, we were, in fixing the roads, people go faster. They drive what they're comfortable doing. And so what we will do is, in those instances, we've actually been striping 11-foot lanes, which is a little bit more narrow than a standard 12-foot lane. And in a lot of ways, it does benefit the overall kind of complete streets aspect of the projects as well because we're able to pick up some additional real estate for a bike lane, and we certainly want to be a biking and walking friendly community as well. So there are certain things that we're already doing. We did the same on Fair Lane as well. And then a couple of other things to, you know, as far as the comparison to Green Valley Road, I was referring to the portion of Green Valley Road that's in the city limits. And then it does have businesses fronting it very closely, by the way. And so, um, in that area, as it goes from city limits to Ray Lawyer Drive, and then there was a question of why can't we leave the signals on a little longer? And this is something we've talked about, too, but it's important to understand this part of, of, uh, traffic engineering as well, is that driver psychology addresses certain things, and one of them addresses is patience. And so when we have a light that's green for longer than 120 seconds, we see a jump in violations, in violators going across the highway. And Caltrans has been tinkering with the timing of the signals for years. They do it every single year, and especially during the active, uh, weekends, they're out there tinkering on it as well. So that's the only reason why they can't make it go any longer is because then it actually becomes a dangerous situation. And then as far as this being observational data, um, you know, I believe that when a speeding ticket is issued here or in Maryland, it's an observation that somebody's going excess the speed. So that's also observational data. So we can't issue a ticket and we can't cite re, an enforcement need if there isn't an enforcement need. So just kind of keeping these things in mind that we can only, you know, we can only administer or address things that we can actually prove and have supported through enforcement, too. So that was just kind of a couple of things that I was wanting to clarify on. So that was just kind of a couple of things that I was wanting to clarify on.
Well, my observation is that not, Clay Street is built to handle, it was pretty obvious, and this really did kind of shock me, that it was this low, but I have always felt that Clay Street was, you know, could handle the volume that has been going. But what I really am concerned about are the little feeder streets. And I confess, I'm guilty of going over Coleman to get home, and it's awful. I, I feel really bad, and I, I, the houses that are there on Coleman, those were built zillion years ago, and they're not like the current housing development that's over there on Clay Street. So, but the road is a one-way road, and you've got people going both ways, you've got a lot of folks that are not even familiar, they don't know where they're going, and they then, you know, have to head up to go to, like you were going to go to Goldbug Park and then come around, and then you're on Spring Street. And it, it's created a real problem for those of us coming out on Tunnel. We can't hardly get out on Spring Street on Sunday afternoon. So, I mean, it's just like you say, one thing leads to another. And I quite frankly think that I'm, I'm really anxious to see, even though I know that it's going to create some problems for the residents on either side of 50, if you want to cross, if you want to get to the other side, there are ways to do it. And I don't think it's going to create a traffic jam trying to do it. But I'm, I'm, I'm anxious to see if that, turning the signals on for four hours might help all of these, this situation. Because we can't go, it, it, we cannot go to all these streets and put traffic, I guess we, well, maybe we could put traffic bumps all over town. But it's just, to, the volume is there. And, you know, I think that the, the, the devices now that tell you to go on these little roads, you know, we, obviously, we've tried to get the company to stop that, and they say they can't, so I just, I, I, if we're going to address Clay Street, then we've got to address all the streets. Pacific, Tunnel, Spring, yeah, all of them. Because we're, we're impacted.
Yeah, Airport Road even. It's amazing. People will go that far out of their way.
Exactly.
To think that they can keep moving, keep, just lines of cars on Airport Road on Sunday afternoon.
I have long advocated for bermashave signs, along.
That's a trademark.
And if people just had something to read and laugh about, you know, it would settle them down, and they would just, you know.
Slow down, go back, you're a fool. What are you doing? People don't pay attention on Iron Mountain Road. Stop giving us, no. Is it my turn, or is it Dennis's turn? No, go ahead. No, go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
This is a situation that I struggle with, you know, the, the reports and the statistics definitely, clearly demonstrates that there's not a, a overarching speeding issue while there are some outliers. And then, at the same time, it, the, the volume that is experienced is, is temporary and only seasonal, for the most part. So, to me, this is almost something that we could handle with a little extra enforcement, some targeted enforcement. You know, and I did talk to Judy, she really didn't. She wasn't interested in coming tonight. But she, but one of the things she said is, is there's just a few cars that are really doing a lot of the speeding on the road. And, and I believe that it wouldn't be hard to figure that out in a short period of time, as well as her observations, because she has expressed those. And, and worked with some of those, some of our citizens to help them understand the speeding limit on that road. The, it seems like there's a bit of, if you go down, if you walk down the road, if, you know, I've tried to drive the speed limit on several roads in this town, and it is really difficult to drive the speed limit, whether you're on Main Street, you're on Cedar Ravine, somewhere 30 miles an hour, and I, I feel very uncomfortable going over a little over 20 miles an hour. And, and so, you know, and so I think, you know, this is, speeding is a bit of an issue around town on some of these, but then, you know, it seems like we're, we're either talking about speeding or we're talking about congestion, but the, those two do not collide generally, as, as was demonstrated by our city engineer. So, I, I, I'm open to seeing what are, what we come up with for mitigation opportunities. And also, in Sacramento, they have, they have opportunities for neighborhoods to actually come together as a neighborhood and collectively petition the city. If you get a certain percentage of the households within a certain road, you can petition the city to have something done. And, you know, we have had one or two people, but if, if that petition shows up and, and, you know, forces us to, you know, I wouldn't say forces, but give us the opportunity to look at it even harder, I think, or have a policy to that extent. And some communities allow those, those citizens to actually pay for their speed bumps to be put in, put in, which is also, you know, if, if the statistics don't show it, and they really want it, then let's consider what it would look like to have those funded by the residents of that street. If it's, because the statistics are, are kind of, at least the statistics that were taken at the time, were somewhat self-evident, considering it was the busiest time of the season and still was not at peak capacity, and we had, what, a 15-point score? So, those are my comments for now. I don't know where to go with this right now.
Councilman Acuna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to commend the city engineer in doing a wonderful job of applying the engineering standards and collecting the data as it exists out there. You've done exactly what you've been asked to do. And you have proven that, generally speaking, the road design meets what it's supposed to do. Speed is, is, is an issue, and we can have speed complaints on any street in town. That, that happens. And this is just kind of a classic, however, the engineering world clashing with the realities of the perception of the neighborhood world. So we don't have on paper the data that says 365 days a week, or a year, there's, there's a problem out on these streets, yet we know there is. I've driven it. I've been stuck in it. I've seen it. And it's not necessarily the speeding as much as, as, as the Highway 50 bypass issue, in my mind. And as Dennis pointed out, it's seasonal. And you really got me thinking, good, Rebecca, when comparing Green Valley Road to Clay Street. It's a classic engineer shot, cross-section of a street, cross-section of a street, it'll handle 20,000 cars. You've got 8,000 cars going up the street, but we can double your traffic, no problem. We can almost three times it. If I'm trying to squeeze out a project to do something like that, that's a great engineering challenge. But the reality is, and it's been alluded to up here, is that we've got a new section of Clay Street that plugs into an old, ratty piece of Clay Street, that previous city councils and, and public work directors and what have you, never really addressed. All the little choke points and the inadequacies, the lack of sidewalk, storm drains, it goes on and on, on the old part of Clay, of Clay Street. We also have, at that same point, Clay Street dumps onto Coleman and then heads on down to Main Street. Having heard from a lot of neighbors on all those streets up in there, they can't get out of their driveways on Saturdays and Sundays. Now it's Mondays. Coleman is absolutely destroyed, as far as the pavement condition. Bedford has been destroyed for years, the rest of it is gone now. These are massively historic neighborhoods. And I don't know why some of the historical advocates don't catch on to the fact that some of our oldest families were pioneers up on that hill. The property that I've been involved in over the years on Coleman Street, and the research I did from that, and which original farmhouse then divided up and split, and on and on, there's a tremendous amount of history up there on Coleman Street. Can't get out of their driveway now because it's being used as Highway 50. So, I would suggest to the council that the challenge is not in confirming that Clay Street was designed properly, in all the new areas, but that we, we're tying it into a whole bunch of old antique roads that, that are sorely lacking in pavement, brush clearing, drainage, sight distance, and we're asking them to serve multiple days of the week as a alternate to Highway 50. That's certainly not an engineer's responsibility. That's my responsibility, to figure out, oh my goodness, how did we let this happen? Then I plug you in to fix it. I have suggested a number of times, and having sadly just had to use Coleman Street a whole bunch here the last couple, three weeks, that it is a one-lane road. It's overgrown, it's a dodge-the-potholes going uphill, downhill. It's a disgrace, in my mind, on both slopes. There's parking, there's cars parked right in front of no parking signs. Chief, sorry, I couldn't get you a picture, but there are other little priorities going on, but it's unbelievable what's going on up there. A lot of that is on us, on us as a city, as a city council. I would hope that the council, this fall, will consider maybe, I have suggested making Coleman one-way to, to keep that traffic away from. The beauty of the situation in my mind, Rebecca, is that we've got one spot where we could plug it, and we could then save all those historic neighborhoods, including all the way over to Tunnel and Clay, Spring, all of those neighborhoods. If we could plug it over there and put them back where they belong. So, maybe we make Coleman one-way for three months out of the year, maybe two months out of the year. The impact shouldn't be on our neighbors, but if we could work together with the community to help us get that Highway 50 traffic out of there, make Coleman one-way for October and November and see what happens. If we could do that in conjunction with the Highway 50 pilot project, I think that would be very interesting. And it, and it would be a huge service and a safety benefit to the, the entire north side of town. Chief, if there's a fire, you know, Chief Tim Cordero, if there's a fire, they're not getting out over there. If, if we have to do some sort of an evacuation, it ain't happening. This past October and November, I held my breath, as all the people were pouring back from Tahoe and Apple Hill, and it was still 90 degrees, and I'm thinking, if that north side of town goes, there's no place for you to go, let alone, how do we protect the residents? So, something has to be done. And if it doesn't quite fit in the engineering book, oh heck, that won't be the first time that's happened. We have to recognize the uniqueness of our communities. I thank engineering for doing what they did, but it's still a neat old town with a lot of narrow streets and a lot of old property that's built right up to the edge of the street. So we've, we've got to find a way to make it work.
Kara, did you have another comment?
Well, just in terms of direction to staff. Mark, did you want to add that as an agenda item for later on?
Sure.
Or should we?
Absolutely, I've been.
Table this until we have the traffic guideline, traffic easement guidelines and the pilot study done, or?
I think, given what's happened with the economy, it's, it's not stopping. So we have yet another false even approaching, and I think it's a, it's, we have an obligation to try and, as I say, if we can put our finger in the dyke and see if that works, we, we at least, we owe it to that entire side of town to do that.
I, I do think, though, that we should maybe, I, what Kara just said, the hotspot that's being, a committee that's, you know, trying to address this, that we, they might be, give them a chance to see if that would work, and if that would clear, if that would make the traffic, you know, travel, it would eliminate a lot of these problems that, you know, that we wouldn't have to worry about.
And we need to start making streets one-way before that traffic study would skew the data.
And that's why I would suggest it on a trial basis for just a couple of months, with the complete input from that whole neighborhood, all those old streets up in there, and see what the neighborhood, I've had a pretty strong input from a number of them up there already, because, like, as I say, they, they're prisoners in their own neighborhoods right now.
Kind of like Apple Hill.
Yeah. And I, and I mean, I. It's like living on Carson Road up in Apple Hill, across from High Hill. Suddenly, they're.
I'm just as guilty as Councilmember Borelli. I mean, I, I live right, we live right next to each other, and, you know, I, I use Coleman to get around on Saturdays and Sundays, to get back home when I'm stuck on 50 or on Main Street.
Michael, I want to just interject one time. I came on Coloma Street the other day, there's so many people, you, the kids from the high school are using your, your little street.
Green, yeah. Green gets used a lot.
To get off of Coloma.
Absolutely.
So that's another example. And it shouldn't be.
Yeah. I mean, we have, I mean, and that's, and that's the issue, is that it's not a, it's not just Clay Street, it's a ton of streets throughout town.
Exactly.
I, you know, when I first heard about the one-way on Coleman, I thought, that's a great idea, because it would cut off that artery, I mean, it would force people back. We have to figure out where we'd cut them off.
We'd have to push them back.
Uh, so that you didn't have the bottleneck up on somewhere where they couldn't even make a, the U-turn to get out of there. But I kind of think, if we're going to do this traffic study, I'd rather have it as just that, because then, if we have a one-way also on Coleman, at the same time we've cut off the ability to turn left from the north side of town, you've, now you've really limited locals from what they're able to do. You'd have to really go to the two ends of town before you were able to get to the other side of town without, so you kind of need Coleman for local access, I think, if you have green, if you have green lights going through on, on Highway 50.
Mr. Mayor, Friday.
Because it should be at that point, we're trying to see if it's the minimus traffic on, on, on that, all those arteries, if.
We need to see if it works.
We need to see if it works. I don't know, Rebecca, if you have any insight on that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, you know, we had discussed about, you know, wanting to implement, you know, traffic calming measures on Clay Street and taking the route of, you know, getting a neighborhood to collectively petition the city. Would it be appropriate to, I mean, I'm just kind of asking for staff's direction, would it be appropriate to make the suggestion for the same kind of petition for Cole, Coleman? In that, you know, I mean, just, you know, you know, I, I just don't want the, the vocal minority to make the decision for the majority. I mean, there may be some folks up there that don't want that. So just an idea, but I'm asking on, under the question for direction to staff. Sorry.
May I interject that this is all about Clay Street traffic calming, and we've really deviated from the, from.
Yeah, but it's.
The agenda item. And I, and I agree that there's, Coleman is, is there, and how far, how, how far do we go outside of this particular agenda item on this? Are we, are we in good ground here?
Mr. Driscoll?
I guess if you can tie it into reducing the problems on.
Clay.
Clay Street, then you're okay. But if you're isolating Coleman, then you're not.
Yeah.
Understood. The only reason we have to talk about Coleman is because the traffic's coming from Clay Street.
Exactly.
There's no way, Mr. Driscoll, sleep well tonight, there's thousands and thousands of connections every weekend.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's very true.
Mayor, could I make just a couple of things? First thing I want to mention is, I think Councilmember Vice Mayor Thomas brought up the issue of, you know, the petition and paying for speed bump. We, we actually do have a speed bump policy in place currently, and I think it's been shared with the Clay Street, oh, she left. I think it's been shared with them, as far as I know. But there is a policy currently in place where neighbors can petition, and then they actually pay for a speed bump to go in the road, and there's certain conditions they have to meet, and et cetera, but, so we do actually have that in place currently, and that, there's a resolution that adopted that, and it's all in place. The other thing I just want to mention, I, and Councilmember Acuna, I keep wanting to call you Mayor Acuna, sorry. Councilmember Acuna and I have had several discussions about the, what we're calling, Rebecca came up with this name, the Trip to Green Project, and making Coleman one-way. I would like to think that if you, if the Trip to Green is successful, Coleman doesn't have to be one-way.
Right, I agree.
They shouldn't both have, have to happen, we hope, we hope.
And I agree.
Now, true, you're going to increase some local traffic because of that, but for a four-hour period, I really wonder how much is that really going to be? But that's something we need to monitor and determine, and that's the purpose of doing this study, what other effects are you going to have by doing it, and what kind of work is it going to take to actually put that together for, say, a four-hour period? We initially, the, the thing right now is, we're talking about doing it, it's just for one Sunday, to see, see how it works. But I would like to have it explored, to say that, okay, if it does work, what would be an ongoing solution to keep that happening, at least through the fall, when we have that, that major traffic, so.
Patty?
So, just to, I mean, okay, so, we're talking about the local traffic, but honestly, if I, if that, if Highway 50 is on a constant stream, I would get on Highway 50 and come home. I would not go up on Coleman.
Well, good.
So, you know?
It worked.
And I think.
Do it for two months.
It would.
No, you're right, Patty.
But isn't that, isn't that the truth?
Yes, absolutely.
And we do have this traffic study, the modeling going on in March?
Yes, and that's going to be a great study that they're going to do.
So, for the hotspot study, we actually have a stakeholder meeting and a community meeting planned for April, that we're working to schedule right now. I mean, so we're, we're moving on that as well, too. The interesting part about doing the Trip to Green approach is you will get a very real temperature gauge for the communities. temperature gauge for the community's taste for either eliminating the signals or making some sort of movement in order to move some option forward on Highway 50. You know, Caltrans, to their credit, they do not force a solution on a community and they have come to us many times over, including extensive models of showing an elevated and a depressed freeway, trying to find a solution and the, and at that time, the community had no taste for it. And so, to their, to their credit, they've tried talking to us about a solution and when they did the Highway 50 Ops job in 2008, they, they were very upfront about that in all their reports and the public meetings, that this will not fix the issue, it will help. And so, you know, that kind of comes back to the question that we have the community that we want to collectively decide and not have, you know, a one, one neighborhood or another, you know, coming up with the solution, but that we all have to live with because this is our community. So, you know, having that flipped to green, all those lights flipped to green, you will actually kind of see how people will behave and react and once it goes back to normal, they might be like, well, that was a great idea, you know, we should do that more often. And then now you say, well, we can't, but do you have an appetite for finding a permanent solution to Highway 50? So, just a few things to think about as we're moving forward.
Well, and Rebecca, to your question that you asked of us, what are some of the mechanisms we can use to get to a more granular, granular level with people on Coleman and on Clay? It's just as an example of areas where, you know, we know we have some issues. Is that a, a postcard from the city? Is it an email? Is it something we put up on the website? I'm just looking at how we will be able to solicit that, that information so that they know that there's potentially these options of petitioning us, even if the data doesn't reflect.
We could utilize Survey Monkey, there's, you know, any number of options available that we could do. We could leave a postcard, you know, and have people turn in, you know, paper ballots if that's more comfortable. I mean, there's any number of options to solicit the information.
Maybe we could get a couple of people in the neighborhood to carry petitions.
That would be good too. There is a Friends of Clay Street organization, maybe put that with them, that, you know, if, if the entire neighborhood genuinely feels that this is an issue and should be addressed, that, you know, the policy as Cleve mentioned is in place and that that is, would be the proper organization to go and solicit those votes.
Vice Mayor.
Oh, I just think that you've got to be cautious of self, self-driven petitions that, that the narrative is created that's different than what the reality of the situation is and we've experienced that before.
And the city could actually create the verbiage for what it's, what it's actually proposing and what the policy is in place to, to just to state facts as facts.
One, one more thing, I, I would like to commit to the, you know, staff will, and I'm going to look at Rebecca because she's got to help me with this, but by the end of March, we can have this traffic calming manual completed. I think it's important that we look at that and consider all options because there's a lot of other options identified in that other than putting a bump in the road to slow down traffic. And we've got lots of bumps in the road.
We have plenty of them.
Right now, I don't know why they want us to fix them, they work pretty well now. But I, I think that's maybe where we could bring this to a conclusion and say, this is, and, and the standards that are shown in your staff report tonight as far as what constitutes and what you get points for, we can change all of those obviously. Those are brought in from another agency and I'm not saying they're bad, but there may be other standards that we want to use because there are some streets that we have that are unique in, in Placerville. Coleman should be a one way because of how narrow it is and things like that. So, there are some things that perhaps we address and can change in there, but we can commit to getting that by the end of March, back to you. And that way, we can use that to further this discussion and develop a plan. And in the meantime, we will continue with the process to look at the Trip to Green Program and other options that might, the hotspot study that we will continue to be a part of. I know Rebecca and I have a meeting with Woodrow Deloria.
Next week on Tuesday.
Next week to talk about the Trip to Green Program and how we want to, what kind of the parameters for that that we can submit and get that study going. So, that would be my recommendation to you. If there's something interim you want us to look at further regarding Clay Street, we can do that, but that's kind of a timeline that I would look like and may, look at and then maybe a, you know, a process that we can look forward with.
Counsel, I, I think Cleve's laid out a pretty good recommendation in terms of direction to, to staff on this issue. Is there anything else anyone would like to add to that? I don't think we have to make a motion.
You don't need to make a motion, okay.
This is just providing what we've just discussed back to staff, so. Everyone comfortable?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, let's move on here then to item 12.3. Adopt a resolution ratifying construction contract change orders for 1923, 31, 33, 38, 42, and approving contract change order 34 in a total combined amount of $189,020.31 with Doug Verkamp, General Engineering for the Western Placerville Interchange, Interchanges Phase Two Project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. And again, this is Ms. Neves.
Yes. If I may, I just wanted to say thank you to PD for all their help on the previous item, that's it. But I apologize, I didn't get a chance to say that earlier. The proposed item before you for this item is regarding ratifying the construction contract change orders as Mayor Saragosa listed and for the total amount of $189,020.31 for the Western Placerville Interchange. As you know, this project has been constructed to improve the traffic operations and safety on US Highway 50 by building a new off-ramp at Rayloire Drive, a new 150 space park and ride lot, pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and roadway improvements to both Rayloire Drive and Fornie Road, including a new signalized intersection. Construction for this project began on February 2nd, 2018 and is near the end of construction with only punch list and final contract closeout items remaining. The disruption of work for each change order is provided in staff's report with a cumulative total as mentioned and it's all falls within the project's budget. The progress to date, including tonight's recommendations of approval, is still well within the $200,000 in aggregate amount under the city manager's authority for this contract as it was approved by council on January 9th of 2018 when the contract was awarded. That concludes staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Neves. Counsel, any questions for the city engineer? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up public comments. Seeing none, I will bring it back to city council for further discussion.
I'll move approval of the item.
A second.
We have a first and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right, that measure passes five zeros. We'll move on to item 12.4.
Let me just start off by saying, I have to recuse myself on this one too and I'm going to go, go to that cone of silence and take myself there.
All right.
See if you can wrestle up some food back there.
Yeah, can you bring some pizza from back there, some imaginary pizza?
I can get one ordered.
You might know somebody.
Can we order in?
Review Hangtown Creek Culvert Repair Feasibility Study and authorize staff to proceed with the recommendation of Alternative Three and pursue funding in support of that alternative and authorize city engineer to apply for grant funding to support the project. And again, this is for the trifecta, Ms. Neves.
The item before you is to review the feasibility study that was previously presented back in November and look at the recommendation from staff to pursue Alternative Number Three. You may recall in November that we brought forward the draft feasibility study before you this evening where each alternative was discussed, ranging from partial repair to full replacement to full removal without replacement of the failing culvert that is located at Hangtown Creek near the Jack Russell Brewery on Main Street. In listening to public and council comment that evening, staff was guided to look at Alternative Three and its feasibility, which is the full removal without replacement. At that time, the initial cost of this option was $760,000. Upon further evaluation and value engineering, construction costs will actually be closer to about $200,000. This amount does not include the design for slope stabilization, but it's a good pencil holder for the construction costs. The parking area would also need to be reconfigured, bringing the potential total cost of this alternative with design to about $500,000. Funding of this alternative could be possible through various grants the city has submitted for on the pass with, with success. One of the examples would be the grant proposed by Department of Water Resources for the urban streams restoration projects. Tonight's action requests council's approval to proceed with pursuing the recommended Alternative Number Three for full, full removal without replacement and pursue a fund, pursuit of funding for that alternative. Staff's recommendations are further summarized in detail in the report and that concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you Rebecca. Any questions for Ms. Neves?
Not at this time.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. Sorry, I'll eventually get that right.
Sue Rodman. Measure H, measure L, which has nothing really to do with this one, but the idea of opening up the creek so that we do an urban streams renewal on it, I think is a wonderful idea and I'm fully supportive with Alternative Three and go for it. Congratulations to Rebecca for knowing where to get some money to do it.
Thank you Sue. Any further public comments? Kirk?
Yes, I think one of the alternatives I mentioned the last time this was raised is about the insurance policy. My memory is that the Jack Russell Brewery in leasing the property was required to have a million dollars in insurance. I would rather, we looked at that. Every time somebody talks about water grants and that kind of thing, grant money sounds very abstract, but it happens to be our money, whether it comes from the state or the federal government or whatever. So, it just seems the more conservative thing is to have Jack Russell's insurance policy applied. And I agree with the previous speaker that it's certainly in our interest to open it up where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you Kirk. Seeing that we have no other public, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on this and bring it back to council. I'll either maybe Mr. Driscoll or Mr. Morris on the idea on the insurance, just looking for, I don't know if there's any clarification on that.
You know, it's, well, first of all, I would need to look, excuse me, I need to look at it a little further, but generally speaking, the insurance that would be required is for casualty or liability insurance, not for property restoration. So, I think the million dollars policy that Mr. Smith is referring to is, is that type of a policy. Liability and, and not, you know, if it was a building.
Not earth movement.
Yeah, if it was a building and you were renting the building, then there may be a requirement that they have casualty insurance for the building, but this is bare land and I doubt that that's in there, but I would have to look at it again to make sure.
Well, it.
And it's, it's also not caused by the tenant.
It's just like I require my tenants to have liability, but I couldn't get them to pay for the broken sidewalk or something.
Yeah. I'm skeptical that it will be there, but I'll certainly look at it again just to double check it.
Thank you.
It'd be nice.
Further discussion, motion?
I'm really excited about this. When I first read the previous report on this, I was hoping that Alternative Three would be the popular one and I'm glad that it was and that not only did other people like that alternative as well, but also that it ended up costing way less than expected.
Yes, congratulations on that.
And it does seem like something that we'd be able to get grant funding for and it could be just really cool to have some green space, creek view downtown, so I'm excited about this. And do you, do we need a motion here or are we just giving you the heads up to pursue grant funding? I would make a motion to pursue the funding and support of Alternative Three.
A second.
We have a first and a second.
I had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
And I echo Councilmember Taylor's excitement about this and it's good to see the creek be a creek again. Rebecca, would it be, are we going to be back to like native slope or is it still going to be retained in some degree, to some degree?
It will have a combination of both. It kind of depends upon, you know, there's a couple of options. You could either have it fully retained or you could do a partial layback or you could do a full layback and that would be looked at when we look at the impacts to the surrounding area and also as it pertains to the retaining area near Highway 50. The alternative that we looked at that falls within the $200,000 price tag, which being the cheaper option, is looking at doing a partial layback with rockery walls that have a more natural look to them and that would allow for, you know, natural habitat and vegetation to occur. You know, with that being said too, you know, just kind of keep that in mind for future maintenance of the creek too. But as far as that as an alternative, it could be a combination of both.
Okay. A couple of short-term thoughts on.
Sure.
You're obviously going to pursue some various funding options when we get to that phase of it. What are we, what are we going to do with it? Is there anything we can do to improve the current situation instead of having those orange plastic K-really?
Not really.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I wish I could say yes, but the timber stringers below that area have failed. So, we, you know, whoever draws the short straw is the one that has to go underneath and check it out, but it was, it's not a safe area.
Okay, that's, it'd be kind of neat if we could just open it up while we're saving our pennies and say, hey, this is what it's going to look like.
Yeah.
And put a, maybe some sort of temporary fence around it or, not feasible, not practical.
I mean, we can take a look at it, just, you know, kind of just keeping in mind how, how much we want to do that and, you know, and, and the timing of the delivery of the project too. If the situation gets worse, we may need to look at other options too to deliver it faster. So, just, you know, but as of right now, it's holding steady with, you know, no loading on it and that's, and, and it's allowing, and we're being afforded the time to pursue the funding to get it properly addressed.
So, is that something you're going to tackle?
Yes.
I mean, you were planning on doing that.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
So, it's, high flows in the creek aren't going to hurt us, it's just timber rot.
Correct, yeah.
And loading from the top.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, actually the capacity of the culvert's quite, quite large.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any chance that if we were to tell Caltrans how dangerous this was for their highway that they would go, oh my goodness, we're concerned and here's a bunch of money?
Oh, that's a thought.
Because it'd be terrible if we had to take that off and then suddenly.
Yeah, well.
Highway 50 looks compromised.
There's, I mean, there's a couple of points of view, you know, for a brief period, that culvert was the property of Caltrans and they, there, there is suspect that they knew the condition of it and that we received it back and so we may want to look at, you know, kind of doing some recourse on that.
It would certainly benefit their highly used highway.
Yeah, it does receive highway drainage, absolutely.
So, we received a sick culvert.
We did. To be fair, it's like 80 years old, so.
Yeah. So, I have two quick questions. First one, so we're starting, just to clarify, so everyone, I mean, because I don't, I'm not sure if we did this, we're starting from zero dollars on this.
You are correct.
Okay, just wanted to put that out there for, for the record. And then, long-term, with this option, how many parking spaces do we decrease if, or do we know that yet?
We don't know that yet. I mean, it's, thanks. We are currently impacting eight spaces right now that we've been able to pick up on other areas for leased parking. But as far as parking lot reconfiguration, we've, you know, kind of back of the napkin looked at what we could reconfigure the parking lot too and there's potential to pick up additional spaces just from, you know, doing some smart grading and, and relaying out the parking lot.
Cleve, did you have, were you going to say some? Okay. Thank, thank you Rebecca.
Sure.
Okay, so we have, I think we have a motion on the table, so I will go ahead and call roll call or ask for roll call.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right, thank you Rebecca on that and happy hunting.
Good luck. And Mr. Mayor, while Councilor, or while Vice Mayor Thomas removes himself from the cone of silence, I'm going to excuse myself for the rest of the evening and wish you well.
Understood.
I didn't expect to be here this long, but it's been so much fun.
You've done good.
Yeah, you've done, you've done very well.
My wife is going, if he. My wife is going, if he gets sick again. So, Cleve, I hope to see you in the morning.
Don't forget your bowl.
And don't forget my bowl.
All right.
Since you're coming back, I'm leaving. I heard you were coming back, so I'm late.
Yeah, yeah, wait, nobody railed on me?
No.
That's a shame. I'm disappointed.
Okay, item 12.5. Adopt a resolution making the following finding that the city waive notice of five working days that a mistake was made in the bid for Vince Guerra Construction, and that the mistake was made, that a mistake was made with the bid materially different than intended, and that the mistake was made in filling out the bid and not due to an error in judgment or carelessness, consenting of construction withdrawing its bid, and third, approving a construction contract with C.E. Cox Engineering for the Mosquito Road Stabilization Clay Street to City Limits Project, CIP 41819, in an amount not to exceed $987,815, authorizing the city manager to execute the said contract, and four, approving the contract amendment number two with REY Engineers in the amount of $40,730 for construction management support for the said project. And again, Ms. Neves.
This one happens to be my favorite item. This item, as you mentioned before, with all the various movements on the, on the recommendation for the resolution, it actually represents the first of three construction contracts that will address the condition of Mosquito Road. Hallelujah. In this Phase One contract, the water main sewer system and storm drain systems are being addressed to support the future paving on Mosquito from Clay to City Limits, thus lengthening the lifespan of the future pavement. The second contract will be to pave Mosquito from Clay to City Limits, and the third contract will be to build Placerville Station Two, which includes paving of Mosquito Road from Highway 50 to Clay Street. Bids for Phase One were opened on November 14th, and the city received a total of nine bids. Following evaluation of the submitted bid packages, bidder number one, Vince Aguerra Construction, was notified that they would be deemed a non-responsible bidder. Vince Aguerra Construction requested that they be able to withdraw their bid in lieu of being deemed non-responsible as an error in the bid in accordance with Public Contract Code, Section 5100. Per the letter attached to staff's report, it summarizes the merits for request of the withdrawal of bid. As part of this evening's action, council will be waiving the five working daytime limit to receive such a request and will be allowing Vince Aguerra to withdraw their bid in compliance with that section of the Public Contract Code. Bidder number two, Caggianno, General Engineering, was determined to be non-responsive in their submittal and complete bid package. So that's the difference between non-responsible and non-responsive. Bidder number four, Lund Construction, was also determined to be non-responsive. However, bidder number three, C.E. Cox, submitted a complete bid package, therefore, the revised bid summary is provided in staff's report with the remaining six bids. The bid from C.E. Cox was found to be below the engineer's estimate, and staff performed an analysis of the bid proposal and found it to be in conformance with requirements of the contract proposal terms, and C.E. Cox to be in good standing with current licenses. As such, staff has concluded that C.E. Cox is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and recommends award of the construction contract. Project construction is anticipated to occur over the next couple of months and is within staff's abilities to also administer this 100% locally funded project. Now, I want to mention too that this is actually the largest single locally funded project we've put out since the receipt of Measure L, so very grateful for what that sales tax measure has done for our city. Therefore, some engineering staff will actually be administering the construction management and inspection of this project in-house. For budgeting purposes, full-time inspection materials, testing, and construction staking costs are estimated to be about $165,000. If we were to consult out for those services, it's estimated that would actually cost about $330,000. Performing these services in-house yields an estimated savings of $165,000 or roughly 50% for this locally funded project. And furthermore, having the project designer, who possesses firsthand knowledge of the contract as its author, perform the duties of resident engineer consolidates two project team positions into one, resulting in a significant project cost savings and efficiency in administering the contract. When construction commences, minor technical construction support costs, or, excuse me, tasks will include construction staking, material submittal reviews, and compaction testing will be required. The city does not have those resources in-house to execute, execute those few required tasks, so a contract amendment in the amount not to exceed $40,730 to the existing paving overlay design contract with REY Engineers is recommended with the award of the construction contract. Staff's full recommendations are summarized at the end of staff's reports, including the budget appropriations. And, and that concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Rebecca, have you ever done, or have we ever done business with this Cox?
Yes, we have. Actually, they were our contractor for the Chanel School PRV and for the Sierra Tank Project, and they are excellent to work with.
Good.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. I think we have a Measure L statement here.
We have the cheering team.
Yes.
Yes, Measure H, Measure L is very happy to see this go. I will second the hallelujah from Rebecca. This is a great project, and having them be able to handle this in-house cuts the cost and I think gives us a better deliverable project as well. So, yay team.
Thank you, Sue. I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council. We have a.
I would move, yeah, I'd move 12.5 as presented.
A second.
All right, we have a second, let's go ahead and call roll call.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right, that measure passes for zero. And item 12.6, acknowledgment of the mayor's appointments of council members to other agency commissions and boards, and acknowledges the mayor's appointments to two council members to serve as the city council subcommittee for the interview team, and for the upcoming appointments to city committees and any vacancies that may occur on committees throughout the year. And so on this one, the only thing I will add here is that on the Eldorado County Transportation Commission, the alternate as opposed to myself will be Councilmember Acuna. Any comments on 12.6?
Bueller?
Yeah, I don't think we, I will go ahead and close public comments, and then I think we can go ahead and move that to file on 12.6.
So move.
Do we need to have a motion on?
You don't need a motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we'll go hopefully very quickly here. Does anybody have any reports on any of their committees?
I, I have a, for the Fire Safe Council?
Yep.
We have a meeting this coming Thursday night at 5:30 in the Veterans Building, and I am so happy that Mr. Cordero is on our, here and I'll have somebody to converse with, and I think it's gonna be great, the coordinate, because we have a lot of questions and you'll be able to help us get some answers. At 5:30 in the Veterans Building.
That's right. Thank you, Chief Cordero, for sticking it out with us.
We're really breaking him in.
Well, well, Placerville.
Give you a nice early one today. Any other comments on committees? I, I'm gonna go ahead and skip mine, I think. Okay, so we'll move on to item 14, request for future agenda items, and I know we had moved Ms. Chapman's request for a California Historical Park in parts of downtown Placerville to this part. If we wanted to hear a presentation from her on, on this issue. And I think she did mail or email us, I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at, at least I think some of her initial thoughts on that, but what's the council's pleasure on this?
I would hear the presentation, hear her thoughts.
Can I just throw out one thing on that?
Sure.
One, one concern I had with it is she includes in her presentation the use of the old city hall buildings, which we have already.
We've already established.
Made a commitment and awarded a proposal on, so if you wanted to, one option I would ask you consider is to send back to her and say.
Those are no longer.
You should, we'd be happy to hear the presentation, but those should not be part of your presentation as we've already, because I don't want to cause any controversy on that, or that they're up, still up for grabs.
Yeah.
Because I don't think they are based on the action we've already taken. So that, that would be one comment that I would ask you to consider.
Good idea.
If you want to hear the presentation.
Do we have other comments on this issue, item?
I have to be honest, I really didn't have time to read the whole thing. I know it was pretty lengthy, and I, if she's requesting that we hear it, I guess this is something that we kind of are obligated to do.
I don't, I don't know, we're definitely not obligated to, to hear any presentation. People want to provide city council, and it's up to us to drive that. But at the same time, you know, what she's apparently asking us to do is consider turning this, some specific area into a national historic park.
Yeah, either national and/or California, I'm not exactly sure what that, what that entails.
Yeah, California National Gold Rush Park is the terminology she used, I believe.
But it's the town, it's downtown, I mean, it's.
Correct.
The Main Street.
Correct, the historic downtown, yeah.
I think it pulls in some other things too, but yeah, it's mostly.
It probably does, yeah.
It pulls in quite a few things.
Yeah. Well, and I would agree, I think we've made a decision already on confidence, immigrant. If, if Ms. Chapman wanted to give us a presentation on, on this idea, it would have to be without those buildings included in it, since we've already made a decision on what we're doing with those two buildings. And I would just say if we could deputize our city manager to.
Deputize.
To circle back with Ms. Chapman on, on this issue, on that.
You give me a gun to?
And if she's agreeable, then that's, you know, we'll, we'll hear her presentation, but it would have to be conditioned on not having those two items with, within it.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a timeframe that's really pressing, if it needs to be on the next agenda or just on an agenda that's a little bit lighter and won't go till 11.
Yeah, in the, in the near future.
Yeah.
I think it should be fine.
Okay, I can pass it on to her, then, that's fine.
Thank you, Cleve. Any other, do we have any other requests for agenda items from council or staff?
Not here.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move on to city manager, staff reports.
Mayor, if I can suggest here, unless they really want to do it, the information is in your packets, we're at a very late hour. If council is okay with just having a written report, and I don't think Regina would hurt her feelings if she didn't have to give the verbal report. Don't know about the chief, but if you would like to just review those verbal or written reports, there's no real need for us to provide a lengthy verbal report at this time.
I think we all can read and have read, so I think we're good there, and I will go ahead and skip over item 16 as well for upcoming agenda items. I think those are plain as well. So I will go ahead at the early hour.
We do have to do 15.2.
No, we're gonna skip over both of, both 15-1 and 15-2.
We're reading those on our own.
They have become re, re-filed.
Okay.
So, same thing with six upcoming items, you know, well, those will be coming. So, they'll be coming, and there's, yeah. So item 17, adjournment at 10:52, we will adjourn this meeting of the Placerville City Council.
All right.
[inaudible].